I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting of Tuesday, October the 11th, to order. Before we begin, I'd like to, I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving weekend. And no, we do not have a new counselor. I'd like to welcome area director, our director from Area D, Rowley Russell. He's going to be a new face on our committee of the whole meetings. So I'd like you to welcome him.
Welcome.
Welcome.
I'm sure it's not your first rodeo. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Counselor Tripp. A reminder, after this meeting, there is an in-camera meeting following this one. Yes. All in favor of the agenda? Anyone opposed? So carry. Moving on to our registered petitions and delegations. Our first one is the Boundary Museum Society. Subject matter is a quarterly report presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Lee Johosa, and I am the president of the Boundary Museum. And I'd like to say good morning to all of you. Okay, I'll start my report. The mandate of the Boundary Museum is to collect research, exhibit, and use for education purposes artifacts, archives, and photographs relating to human and natural history of the Grand Forks and Boundary area. Our visitor statistics for July to September '15 were 1342, and July to September of this year is 1521 visitors. So we make a significant improvement to that, which is great. Okay, the new board of directors is myself as president, Kathy Rush as treasurer, Monica Colasil secretary, Dave Dietrich director, Laura Roder director, Bob McTavish, and Sam Semenov also as directors. In July, three board members resigned, leaving four vacancies to be filled. We successfully recruited a museum member in August, followed by three new members joining the board in September with an enthusiastic approach to joining the organization. Pardon me. Organization. We have completed the music signage project, had a new director sign over the Harding Mountain Duke of York Heritage Scenic Drive. In August, we had a positive filming experience with Cedarwood Productions. It's called Flavor of the West Coast TV series. And we will be aired on Saturday, March the 4th, 2017 at 6:30 PM. It is TV featuring the Duke of York Heritage and Flower Mill Tradition milling process. Series syndication is distributed to Shaw and shared on your YouTube after the release date. At the Christina Lake Homecoming in July 9th, summer student Christina Kepatza designed and themed displays summer love and greeting visitors along the Boundary Historical Society. The bread-making program tours for local organizations and summer visitors included Boundary Family Individual Service Societies, which is BIS, and Sunshine Valley Community Services enjoying bread baked or fresh-baked bread from the outdoor brick oven with summer student Anton Stupoff learning to build and monitor the fire, a tradition he learned from Bill Shavelde, who has been making bread in the Proctova oven for over the years. Bread tasting and sales were brisk this summer with a final oven firing for the August Festival or the Harvest Festival generating $123.50 just in that one day. Night, we had a night at the museum, and it was the first late-night event with the summer students' collaboration to showcase flashlight tours, glow-in-the-dark, silk screening on visitors' t-shirts, hot apple pie and ice cream, body painting by Emma and Brian working the blacksmith shop with a surprising number of attendees in costume. It was a great success as well. Summer wedding, local graduates Jody Redding and Jason Bellico held their 30th outdoor wedding for, sorry, held on July 30th. They held an outdoor wedding for 180 guests, filling the grounds with spectacular decorations and a testament that we have an outstanding venue for staging varying events and provide additional revenue for improvements and ground maintenance. Silver cattle resident picnics in Old Door Shade House provides a picturesque view enjoyed by the residents who made generous donations after touring the museum in July and August. Grand Forks Duke of York Heritage Milling Society, the Flower Mill Tours finished August 31st after summer students shared rotating shifts with the Milling Society volunteers. The $319 in donations has been equally shared between the two organizations to support operations and Wi-Fi service. The museum will continue serving flower products throughout or selling the flower products throughout the winter session, an indication that our partnership is strong. The Boundary District Arts Council hosted the September 25th Continental Performance Series Under the Stars, an outdoor performance attracting 75 attendees and generating additional rental revenue for the museum. Cattle Valley Food Co-op hosted their third annual Harvest Festival on the museum grounds with record attendance and all-day events for family and visitors. Boundary 4-H Multi-Club Dog Agility continues, fall training with 15 youth and their best friends, demonstrating an agility session in the year's Harvest Festival. The Boundary Museum continues to support our community partnership. Summer students funding Canada Summer Jobs and Youth Canada Works grant providing a total of $15,323.76 in funding for the four positions filled at the museum and archives from May 17th to August 20th, totaling 43 weeks of coverage. In July and August, 21 new members joined, netting us 236. A membership drive will be planned in the coming months, and right now, our membership total is 82. Digital Collection Management Projects update, that's Bob's Toolroom exhibit featuring 1,002 non-motorized hand tools is nearly complete. We are consulting with IT support on the equipment that is needed to complete the project with a focus on touchscreen presentation. Exhibition building extension. In the September board meeting, discussions have commenced to build on an additional 60 feet to our Black Hawk Livery exhibition building to house the larger transportation artifacts restored by the Boundary Woodworkers Guild. We will be applying for grants to fund this project with a project start date of spring 2017. The archives are coming along nicely, and a report is attached from archivist Sue Adrian. Portis BC recently installed outdoor LED lighting for the parking lot and grounds at low cost to the museum. This is greatly improved our outdoor evening activities and provides additional security and safety features for the museum. In closing, I would like to say that the Boundary Museum Society is continuing to engage with local community organizations, and our future looks great. I would also like to extend an invitation through each member of the city council to visit this local gem in our beautiful Sunshine Valley. We asked city council for a motion to accept the quarterly report ending September 30th, 2016, submitted at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, October 11th, 2016, by the Boundary Museum Society. We include the Boundary Museum Society's balance sheet as of September 30th and the statements of income and expenses for the three months, a period ending September 30th, 2016. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Okay.
May I have a motion to receive? Counselor Tripp. All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry.
I just wanted to make a comment if that was possible.
Go ahead, Counselor Tripp.
Thank you. There. I just wanted to say how much we appreciated Mr. Semenov, who allowed us to go through the Heritage Flower Mill. My mother-in-law was out in September, and she, I don't know what's going on here, it's going back and forth, but she, we were close to two hours there. And he just did a lovely tour for us, explaining everything, took us upstairs, and she was absolutely thrilled. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you. That happens also at the museum. Cher gives tours, and it happens for two hours sometimes, too. Thanks.
Counselor Hammett.
I just have a comment, too. Yes, I just want to say thank you for your presentation, and I think the museum's doing a great job. I know Cher's been working hard out there and promoting more activities and uses for the venue. I'm just curious, you have 82 paid members. Do you have a comparison of what your membership was last year?
No, I don't. I didn't get that.
I'm just wondering if it's growing, because it seems to have, the museum's picked up momentum.
Yes.
And was that your AGM? There seem to be a lot of people in attendance.
Yeah, we had, we had actually a big list, but a lot of them have expired, so a lot did come and renew. And right now, we're also going to have another membership drive to get it up. We used to have about 110.
Right.
And so, right now, we're at 82, so we're hoping that it'll come up a little. I know there's a few expressed that their membership has expired, and they want to come back and renew, so that would be good.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Next delegation will be the Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce. Subject matter, quarterly report presentation. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. My name is Alan Cooper. I'm chair of the Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce. I'll just say a couple of words before I turn it over to Kathy, mayor and council, administration, Rowley, and members, other members of the public here. It's great to come before you, talk about some of the things that we've been doing. Just a little editorial comment, it's really great to see Rowley here now participating in the committee of the whole meetings. I think the more that we work together with different organizations, the more we work together with the city, the regional district, and so on, the stronger that we'll be. And that's kind of the approach that we take. It's not kind of the approach, it is the approach that we take with the Regional Chamber of Commerce. We're really aware that we represent the region from Christina Lake to Beaverdale. And while Grand Forks is the center, largest population center there, we take the approach of the business, whether it be in Midway, whether it's in Grand Forks, Christina Lake benefits us all in this region. So we really work to support all of the businesses. As a board, we've had a strong board, we've had many good board meetings here. Again, we've got a, people come and go on the board, we've had a resignation recently for health purposes, health reasons, which happens, so we do have to replace a board member here, but I feel that we've got a good, strong board, we've got representation from around the Boundary. One of the things that we're engaged in as far as infrastructure, we've become aware that as a board, we need to have good policies. So we were kind of failing, maybe we were a little negligent about that. I've been in contact with some of the other chambers of commerce across BC. The impression certainly is, that's a case that is similar to almost half of the chambers of commerce around BC is their policy development. So we will be working in this next little while in getting some of our policies straightened out, clarified, updated, and so on, because we need to have that infrastructure in place. So basically, we have a lot of projects on the go. We are working hard for business in this area, and really believe that we see businesses, we want to celebrate businesses that are thriving, we want to speak for businesses in this whole Boundary region. I'm going to turn it over to Kathy now, as our executive director Kathy Wright has more detailed information for you.
Thanks, Ellen. Hey, Derek. Thank you for having us today, Mayor, Council, Rowley, nice to see you here also, and administration. I'm going to give you a little bit of an update. Is it not working? No, it is. Thank you. And a little bit of an update on what we've been doing since the last quarter that we were here. We had a social media workshop that we did in Greenwood. There was 13 of us or 12 of us that attended it. It went over really well. I have got some requests to maybe repeat it in Grand Forks, so we'll look at doing that. And then we're also looking at expanding on the social media. This was a very general, and getting into teaching businesses how to market themselves better. It's also for my own personal growth. I'm not real good with Facebook and social media, so I've asked our board if we could put on some courses for my own growth, too, and we're hoping it will help the businesses in the business community. So it went over really, really well. We had Susan Charnell from Greenwood do the presenting of it, and she's willing to move around the Boundary and do a few more. We're also holding on November 10th a business forum, which was on one that quite a few of you attended last June, and it's, we've taken a portion out of it, so we've not put the document on the shelf and forgotten about it, and we're now going to pull out of it, and we're going to pull out the service, the hours, and that for businesses. We're actually doing a secret shop that is taking place on businesses now, so we get a good feedback, and from there, we'll hold the other business forum and then pull out other stuff and continue with this document. I'm pretty excited about this one, because it's all about service, which we hear a lot sometimes as a struggle here, promoting your business, the Boundary as a whole, and just knowledge on the Boundary, so if someone comes into your business, you can actually give them a bit more, and good service. After that, our downtown business committee is going really strong right now, very happy with the group we have. Chris Hammond is a big part of that group. I know they were in front of you in September, so I won't give you too much on them, but they do have a Halloween coming up, October 29th. It's Fright?
Fright Fest.
Thank you. And I always forget what it's called. It's called Fright Fest. You're going to have pumpkins for you to judge, lots of stuff for the kids. Will participate in it in one way. I've asked Lynn Howes, who would like the chamber to do that. So we'll do that. And then they also have a Black Friday coming up in November 18th for local shopping in that. I know they're still working on signage for downtown and the parking issue and different things, too. Another thing the chamber has going, I'm not sure if we've ever done this before, but it's a local community directory. It'll be in print and online, and it's being sold now. The sale should be done about the end of November. It'll be one of our major fundraisers for the Chamber of Commerce. So yeah, we're hoping it brings awareness and also allows people to do a little more local shopping and remembering our businesses that are out there and service groups. Our website, we're hoping will be up at the end of this week. We have a new website, pretty excited about it. It's got a nice, fresh look, it's kind of, we've re-sort of branded the chamber, so we'll come with that. It'll have information where our directory is printed, it'll go up online. So yeah, excited about our website. I'm going to see Brian from Biopom. It's been designed locally, along with our community directory, will be printed locally and designed locally within the Boundary, so I'm really happy about that, too. We're also doing a microbrewery workshop, for a lack of better words. We've had about four requests on microbreweries from Rock Creek through to Grand Forks, and what our hopes is kind of is we can become sort of like a little wine tour through the Boundary, but a brewery tour with the people that would like to do that, and with that, we hope we can continue building on it. We also did movies in the park this year. We did three of them so far, and we have two that we're doing in our, this month with Midway and Rock Creek Schools. We did one in Christina Lake with 120 participants, and their best movie turnout was "60's," so we were pretty happy with that. And then we did one here in Grand Forks, and we had over 200 participants. We were really lucky, and Tellus came and did some promoting on their new fiber optics that they're doing here. We also had the credit union's support with it. The Dollar Store gave us 120 glow sticks to give out to the kids, so everyone was glowing in the park, and that, we actually ran out because there was way more participants than we had planned, so that was very successful, and we look forward to our next two with Rock Creek and Midway. Some of the upcoming events we're participating in is the Grand Forks signage meeting that the city here is putting on in Community Futures, the Business Excellence Awards next week coming up, we'll be part of that, and we'll have a table there, and we've sponsored two of their awards. What else are we doing? We'll participate in the Halloween Fright Night, the business forum, of course, that I was talking about, from the one that we pulled out of here, the workshop on the breweries, and Black Friday. As Ellen mentioned, we have a policy workshop next week we're doing. We actually only have draft policy, policies at this point, so we'd like to have a proper policy in place. I'm thinking that's about all I have for you today. Have I missed anything, Ellen?
I think you've covered it all.
And then our financial statement is attached also, if you have any questions on it. So thank you for having us today, and any questions?
Kathy, thank you, Ellen. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, worship. Just a question, Kathy, you talked about business hours. Are you going to encourage businesses to stay open longer, particularly Saturday?
That's exactly what we're addressing, yes. And because I, I mean, I go shopping on a Saturday afternoon, and there's three businesses open after 1:00, basically, and it's hard to encourage local shopping when our business is.
Yeah.
And I know the downtown business committee, I think, is also addressing that.
My husband and son-in-law came down Saturday afternoon, and they wanted to make a purchase for a grandson, so the store they wanted to visit was unfortunately closed.
I know. And that is one of, and that's out of this business forum that you guys all attended last June, that was part of it. And so, and Trudy Helen that also did it is also going to facilitate it with me, so yeah, I'm looking forward, we've been working together quite well on it.
Counselor Hammett.
I'm just curious, do we have a copy of that? It's not included in the minutes.
It's been emailed to you. Yeah, you all have it separately, yes. Yeah, I apologize, I tend to, I always think your deadline for it is Wednesday, and I miss it, so I need to find out your deadline to get it in your stuff.
Any other questions? May I have a motion to receive the information from the verbal quarterly report from Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce and refer the fee for service request in 2017 budget processing. Counselor Crogg, all in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Thank you once again.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the Grand Forks Art Gallery Society, and the subject matter is the quarterly report presentation. Good morning. Welcome.
Morning, worship, councilors, representative, staff, members of the public. Jan Deanna Lederwitz, I'm the co-chair of the Grand Forks Art Gallery Society. That society operates the gallery too, as well as the visitor center. However, as I understand, we're actually here for a request for fee for service. We presented our last quarterly very recently, and that really is our purpose. I'd like to thank everyone, for in particular the city, for the ongoing support that we've had over many, many years. It's been a very good relationship, and I point out that, thank you for that money. That money provides that the doors can be opened. It pays for staff, it pays for people in the visitor's center. However, we also participate in many fundraising and grant writing projects. That allows the exhibits and additional staff to be available. So again, thank you. We hope you will provide your continued support. But I'm going to now introduce Terry Woodruff, who is our executive director, provide the details of our work. Thank you.
I'm going to sit, because we do have a PowerPoint presentation, and so I'm not blocking the view behind in case anybody else would like to see it. And good morning, Mayor Conrad, councilors, and also Area D rep Rowley. Nice to see you. As I said, this is, as Deanna said, this is our fee for service presentation. We submitted our formal request on September 16th, and our fee for service guideline of September 20th is sort of every year when we need to submit. You may recall, last year was completely off-cycle, so we're now back on track, getting the proper dates and so forth. So this, this presentation, I'll whip through fairly quick. I am cognizant of our time limits here, but I want to make sure that I leave room for questions after. So basically, we're going to quickly review the highlights over the past year, our strategic plan. Now, the strategic plan, as we said before, is the one that ends at the end of 2017, so we were just starting now our next round of strategic planning, but the goals that we had are going to be carried forward, so it's still relevant. I'll give you a quick summary, our funding request and a discussion piece. The backstory is, everybody knows, we moved into the courthouse in 2008, operating under the name of Gallery 2 Art and Heritage Center. We have an expanded mandate and services with the addition of the heritage exhibition, but also, we have that unique relationship where we provide the visitors' information center with gallery staff. Our highlights, literally, are balanced representation by local, regional, provincial, and national artists. We have a strong membership base, 385 strong. We're actually, right now, is of course our wine tasting, tickets are on sale for our November event, which is our biggest fundraiser that we have, and we are getting all of our memberships sort of coming in now, and we're getting lots of new memberships this year, so that's really encouraging. We, of course, have artist talks in our galleries. This particular slide is just showing more of our local folks that we have, our regional artists. We're really happy that we have the caliber of artists that we do regionally, so we balance our shows with obviously good contemporary art from across Canada, sometimes into the United States, but it is really nice that we are able to support our local artists as well. We have the Studio Watch, the Annual Boundary Showcase, obviously that's, we do that in conjunction with the Boundary Arts Council. We have a specific Studio Watch program for emerging artists in our, in our community, which is another nice bonus for them. We have our permanent collection, the Grand Forks Art Gallery's permanent collection is about 300, a little over 300 works, currently valued at about $350,000. We have the Permanent Heritage Gallery, so that's in our lower level. And this really does, as I've been in the, been in the building now over the course of the summer, and I can actually see what's the value of having something like this, a static display in an area. And it is interesting to me that it is a leapfrog kind of a deal, it's kind of a launching pad for the visitors that come to the area, they all come to the visitor's center, they have a quick look through there, then they want to go and see Boundary Museum, then they want to go and see the Gris Mill, then they want to go and see more, because now they've, they've got a little quick snapshot of what, what is the heritage of our area. So it's a nice value piece. The East Heritage Gallery is a smaller gallery. We are, we held a really beautiful traveling museum exhibit this year on the Japanese-Canadian redress, so we used both of those galleries for that particular large traveling museum show, but our anticipated use for that is more and more for a art-making space. We'd like to start to encourage people to literally come in and make art in the gallery, so we're going to see what we can do with that, dependent on funding, of course. We continue, obviously, to work with the school districts. We are doing tours right now with the existing show that we have on upstairs. They come in, we either have interactive displays for them, or they have an educational talk. It's, it's really well attended, we're really happy with the school board and how well they set up our school. We're really happy with the school board and how well they set up our school, school program. Just some exhibits that we have on the go, or a pad on the go, the Japanese redress, of course, was a traveling heritage museum show. The breastfeeding exhibition is current, and that's just a community service, that's in that small art-making gallery that we talked about, just to support another community group. And Art Spark was our children's program this summer, which was really fun. Our summer students that we hire through the Young Canada Works and Service Canada build a curriculum, and then once a week, we have kids come in and they make art, then we hang it in a small gallery for them, so they could see their work. The visitor's center, of course, administers as part of our fee for service. It's also additional tourism outreach. We go to Canfest, we go to the farmer's market, we go to Canada Day, so there's all sorts of places that we go and promote Grand Forks through the visitor's center under our offices. Just as a side note, I just did a quick check of all of our door counters, so from September to September this year, so far 78,000 visitors, so we did a fair truck through here. Should be just speaking here, hang on a sec. Seventeen thousand? Seventeen thousand eight hundred? Yeah, we get a lot. Seventeen thousand, we're really happy with that number. And we're also happy with the time that they actually spend in the building, so we are, we are now really concentrating on driving those people through the upper levels into the art gallery, just to make sure it's a full experience and then out to the rest of the community. We have, of course, our rental sales program. This is a revenue generator for us. We rent art out to the offices and people in the community, so that's a revenue that's been really good and strong for us, increasing year over year. This year, we included another fundraiser. We did a Taps in Tappus, which was a beer tasting event, artisanal beer tasting event. We kept it kind of small, we kept it 100 tickets, and we limited it that, so we could see what kind of control do we need in place, is this going to work? Worked amazing. We sold out our tickets. We will have it again next year, we'll increase it slightly, but it was a really worthwhile event, so generated some more revenue for us, thank heavens. La Corme Maison, that's an art rental reception that we have in the fall for all of the artists. So we bring them in, have a little reception, hang all of their work, which is an interesting kind of a thing for them to see all of their work together and to see all of the patrons that rent their work come in and thank them, so it's a nice deal. Wine tasting, of course, is our, our biggest event. It's coming up, we're already well into our plans and ticket sales are going quick, so if anybody needs tickets, please really come on and see us in the gift shop. We have, as we said last year, we have now moved our gift shop into pretty much 100% consignment and handcrafted, and in some cases we purchase but from regional artists, so we are not handling what we would call offshore or, you know, sort of competing products with the rest of the business community, strictly artisanal consignment and handcrafted. It's, it's a beautiful space. And we highlight our art rental in here as well. Our grants, we rely on a lot of people for, for our money. Of course, the city is our main core funder, but we also receive funding from the British Columbia Arts Council and Rite of Grant for that. We receive and did receive a slight increase this year in our VC Gaming, Canadian Heritage, and the Canada Council for the Arts. So it works through all places that we continually apply for grants and have received grant money from. So we, we have a worldwide presence, we're on the web, we have social media, we have a Facebook account. Our 300-plus members are literally across Canada, because when they leave the community, for whatever reason, they retain a membership with us, which is wonderful, and pure artists as well. One of the highlights for me this year, to sort of review the gallery, was that we provide employment year-round for six people in our community, and that's huge for me. Like, it seems like a small number, but in our community, that's a fairly good, significant number. So I always have to keep in my mind that we are an employer as well. And in the arts and culture field, it's not that easy to maintain full-time jobs or even part-time jobs. So we do have a combination of full and part-time, as budgeting allows, of course, and I mentioned before, we are all standing down right at the moment, working part-time, but it's budget-dependent and programming-dependent what we need to do. Volunteers continue to be our valuable resource, and without your dedication to the arts and culture, literally, we could not offer all of the services that we do provide for the community. Couple of pictures of us all. Our strategic plan, as I mentioned, the stated purpose is literally to establish a public nonprofit organization in the city of Grand Forks and its surrounding region, dedicated to the advancement of cultural assets, so that is our mandate. The underpinning principle rests on the strong evidence that thriving arts and culture communities not only create a vibrant community, a vibrant society, but also contribute to economic growth, tourism, job creation, and foster public opportunities to explore avenues of heritage and cultural identity. This is nicely aligned with the statements in the City of Grand Forks Sustainability Plan. When I first came into this position, I reviewed, I wanted to know, as the city is our core funder, what's the alignment, what's sort of the thoughts around that. I was really happy to read the sustainability plan and understand that one of the cores that the community asked for was an ongoing commitment to the arts and culture sector. So that made me really happy to know that at least we have that, that common bond, if you like. Some more statements, as we mentioned, for our core values and so forth, aligning with the same. The first goal, then, we have three main goals in our strategic plan, is to advance visual arts and heritage, and that literally is the advancement of a comprehensive and aesthetic presentation of visual arts and heritage programming to the community and the region. And that's obviously our society's main mission as well. The second strategic plan goal is to increase community engagement. The Grand Forks Art Gallery's mandate is to foster understanding, interest, and enjoyment of the arts and heritage throughout the community. Expanded, that also means the connectivity of your community, like, how can we involve? So now we're going to start moving forward into more outreach and education-type programs, where we can really make sure that this is a whole community asset, a whole community meeting, meeting center. Luckily, we have well-attended events, we're very happy about that. Goal three is to enhance financial stability. The Grand Forks Art Gallery Society must rely on various sources of revenue in order to operate successfully. Maintaining a stable annual revenue stream will permit the society to plan and implement programs effectively. One of the catchpoints for us is that we have to plan our exhibitions up to two years in advance, so we need to know with some surety what the stability of our funding is, because we are signing contracts with folks up to two years ahead, and we need to know that we can support them. We're obviously always applying for side grants for the additional things, but we have a core set of exhibitions that we need to book ahead of. So the financial overview, obviously, city of Grand Forks, provincial and federal grants, earned revenue in fundraising, donations and membership, that's sort of our general, what we rely on for our revenue. On the expense side, obviously wages, exhibition costs, admin costs, and facility operating costs. So this sort of breaks out, you know, just to give you a quick look, where the city sits is obviously one of our largest funders, just under 50%. Wages, just over 50%, about 55% of our budget is in wages. So just to give you a quick snapshot, so the actual in 2014-15, our revenues were 370, expenses were 372, so a fairly good year for our society. The forecast for 2015-16 was very, very ambitious. We had hired a new executive director from Manitoba, who was a grant-writing educator. So the forecasted budget was built in with a larger grant scheme built in, didn't happen. Unfortunately, that, that budget was built for a $14,000 deficit, but it actually shows up in that 2015-16 actual, where we actually had an operating deficit of about $67,000. All sorts of reasons. We had a misalignment in our payment dates for funding as well, so you'll see from your, from your year-end financial report that you have in hard copy. Normally, we would receive 142 from the city in a fiscal year, and we received 106 in that fiscal year, so we were a bit behind the eight, just from our funding sources there. The approved budget for the next year, for this year, obviously was trimmed severely to make up the deficit. I'm happy to report that we are actually running pretty much where I expected to be, where our revenues are about 8% over our budget, and we're right at 100% for our expenditures, which is really good news. That's coming through the summer, when that would be our highest expenses timing as well. So now we're going into the last six months, our fiscal, which is April 1st to March 31st. Now I'll be able to really get a clear idea of what it can trip further, to even put us in a little bit better position than, of course, we're dependent on what, what our fee for service will turn out. So in summary, we are committed to the mission, we are committed to the notion that a thriving arts and cultural community creates a vibrant society, but also contributes to the economic growth and tourism in our area. We know we've got lots of challenges, always, in the arts community with funding commitments, but we do intend to build on our success through partnership with the city and our other stakeholders. We look forward to working with the city, how to renew our fee for service agreement. As I'm in the chair longer, I'm seeing the value in that sort of symbiotic relationship, where we're really, it's feeling more partnership to me than, than anything else, so that's a pretty good feeling for me. So, questions?
Councilor Thompson.
Just a question on, on the commitments for the, for the showings that you have to bring in. So what are the commitments of the gallery over the next two years?
Thanks, Chris. We try and keep, because the funding actually comes from the VC Arts Council and VC Gaming and some other funding. So we, we know with some surety what those funds are, so we tailor our exhibitions to meet that. So for instance, we're not spending city money that's straight operating on the exhibitions. The exhibitions come from the VC Arts Council, a little bit of VC Gaming, and the Canadian Heritage Council as well. So if we know that we have $25,000 approved, that's what we spend.
Councilor Trump.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did not actually see a hard copy of the financial statement portion of it, so I'm just wondering, is that something that was sent by email, or were we to receive something?
Thanks, Bev. I actually delivered the hard copy on Thursday morning. We just, just received the, the signature copies from our accountant as well. I apologize that I didn't bring a copy for everybody ahead of time, I just bought one copy, thinking that would just be for a copy. I think in future, I'll just start emailing and maybe, I'm hearing Kathy say that she emails to everybody, perhaps that may be a good process for me to, to start it off. I'm guessing in your in-camera, perhaps, that maybe you'll have an opportunity to have a look at it. But if you've got any questions about it at all, because it's, it's an interesting year last year, so you can just feel free to call me anytime if you need some clarification.
Councilor Bev.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all our presenters this morning. You're all very well organized and beautifully presented, so thank you for coming out.
Councilor Emmett.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you for excellent presentation, and I'm glad to see that your gallery is taking on more events to generate more revenue. I think you're taking, I, I think, the direction, the business direction that you're planning is, is absolutely in the right, right direction. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
I have one question. What initiatives has the gallery taken as far as making it more cost-effective, so that, that level of fee-for-service funding, which is quite a high level, can be reduced?
Well, it's a catch-22. We're hoping that you will not reduce our fee-for-service amount, because we, we would like to be able to still offer a fulsome sort of experience for everybody that comes in. And we really are right on that wire, like, that, that money is just exactly, you know, what we would need, sort of our bottom line. An increase would be excellent, but we are not expecting an increase. The initiatives that we have taken already probably is best proved out, if you look at last year's budget of over $400,000, and we're operating at a $302,000 budget this year, and working right, right to, right to budget. That's probably the best initiative example I can give you, is we've literally knocked all the, our own staff hours back, we've done additional fundraising, we've had for additional grants, and we've received two, two increases to our existing grants already. So better fingers crossed for another one, and hoping stable from the city.
If I might add, there, there may also be some room for rentals coming in as well, that other organizations want some of the small space that we have, that could be a potential burner.
That was the direction of the question.
Yeah, we have been in talks already with one of our offices that we think will be freed up. Of course, we, as I mentioned before, we're hiring in a director-curator recombined position, likely in March, April, when Ted retires. And that will free up one office space, because now it's two people. So then we will be able to shift stuff around, and we will have, be able to meet a request that we've had from another nonprofit for office space, and that will be a rental situation. So we're up for, you know, that kind of, you know, whatever will work with our, that's a large building, whatever will work for that, that the city is onside with, we probably would like to talk about it.
Which in turn could lead to a possible reduction of the fee for funding?
I, I, I know, that's what I say, the catch-22 of it, because if we, if we haven't reduced fee for service, it's where do you cut? Like, our main mandate is the art gallery, but does that mean you cut your visitor's center service to the city? Does it mean, you know, you, you decrease your programming to the education of the kids, to sort of meet our mandate? Any, I guess I'm, it, it's a really hard thing for me, because now I've actually had my, my feet on the floor, and really seeing what happens in that building, really seeing what the value is, and seeing how well we do with how little we have. I, I know it seems like a major, a major funding, but really, it's, it's amazing that we pull off for that.
No, it was not related to cutting any of the services I'm looking at, as you had mentioned, the size and the caliber of that building, which could be utilized more efficiently, which again, would then be able to reduce certain costs to the city. Because as you're well aware, we are in the asset management, we're trying every which way to cut our expenditures and become on a more balanced level. Councilor Crog, and then Councilor Thompson.
Yeah, I've always been impressed with what the gallery brings to the community in their new location, as well as in their older location. I see, and I'm pleased by the, the shift in thinking, you can see on the budget that they're trying to get everything down, so that we're getting the most bang for our buck. And that's basically all I have to say.
Councilor Thompson.
Thank you. This may not be, might not have that information readily at your hands, but I would imagine most of the visitors of the 17,000, which was thinking 78,000. But that's in the summer, in the, in the spring, it's summer and fall? I mean, is there, is there a, an idea of, of what you, what comes through the door, particularly in the, in the winter months?
Yeah, I do, I do have that very well, Chris. It's basically, looks to me, we would be looking at about 11,900 through the summer months, so that's right from the May through September, and then the balance through those winter months as well. January, we're typically closed for about two and a half weeks in there to do our wall preparation, we have to repaint the whole gallery, we have a ton of maintenance that we do in that January slow period. But usually, it's through that May till end of September.
Councilor Emmett.
I think what we need to look is the bigger picture, and, and what the gallery provides us and the community in revenue through tourism, just the magnitude of the people coming through there and getting the word out in the word of mouth, and like you say, it leapfrogs into the other sites to see. And so I, I just think that, you know, when we look at it on a dollar amount, we've got to look at, what does the art gallery contribute to the whole community? And I think it's vast. I think we would lose an immense amount if we didn't have your presence there.
Thanks, Chris.
Councilor Bev.
I just wanted to double-check, did you say that you, through the mayor, sorry, were able to reduce your funding from about, for, your expenses from about $400,000 down to $302,000? So you cut $100,000 off of your budget? That's huge.
So in realistic terms, the budget was approved at 400, some, last year, we were $66,000 short of that budget in operating, but by that same token, that still leaves about $40,000 that we did pick up. So I'm pretty chuffed with how we have done to, to pull everybody together, and literally, I could not have done it without the whole staff buy-in, our volunteers, everybody just really pulling together and saving, you know, sort of what we thought was a pretty interesting situation. So I'm happy with how things are turning out, and I don't see any, any difference if we maintain sort of our levels, that we can start building on that. Because our intention, obviously, too, is to diversify our funding, like, we need to not be reliant on a source. So the more small pockets of funding that we can get, Rowley will be talking, there will be, you know, there will be some, some comfort for us to, to continue with some larger ideas as well.
Councilor Trump.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and being such a benefit to the community, and I really see that perhaps there's a way that we could think about enhancing your profile. You're right there on Highway 3, and perhaps there's a way to increase visibility signage for the events that you're having there, different ways that you could enhance maybe the visitor's center and the amenities that are available through that. I, yeah, I just really think it's a great program to journey there.
Any other questions? Thank you. So I have a motion to receive for information to quarterly report from the Grand Forks Art Gallery Society and refer to letter of request to October 24, 2016, regular meeting summary of information I am serving. Counselor Krog, all in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry on. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move on to the regional topics for discussion. And we are able to graciously welcome our Area D Director, Mr. Rowley Russell. Some of the subject matters, one in particular is the Boundary Area Agricultural Plan and Food Security Project Update. Director Russell.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for having me. I think that this is the, you know, part of my understanding is that this is the beginning of kind of a regular occurrence, so that we can get together every few council of the whole meetings and share some conversation and have a venue for this dialogue, which is exciting to me. So I'm glad, after a bit of a process trying to figure out what the best avenue for doing this is, that we're actually sitting here doing, so thank you. And today, I have a few miscellaneous items I'd be happy to update you on, but recognizing also that you have your agenda set. If you want me to defer conversation about those to a future meeting, that's fine. Otherwise, I'll just touch on, they don't have any attachments or anything, of course.
Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
If you go overboard, we'll stop you.
All right. I guess one of the big pieces that I would like to, again, under the same kind of umbrella of being here, I think communication is one of the big pieces for Area D, for rural Grand Forks, that, you know, I struggle with in terms of communication internally between the city of Grand Forks and myself, or rural Grand Forks, as well as external communication to the public in terms of what's going on. And so this is, I think, another great first step in terms of building that. I did cut off, I just run out of time there. In terms of, in terms of building that strength, and I think it's Alan mentioned, you know, the strength in our community comes from being able to communicate and work well together. I don't think there are many examples throughout the province where, I think we're off to a good start relative to most other places, which is nice, nice to be in. So thanks to all of you. In that same communication umbrella, I guess in terms of moving forward and continuing to improve that communication, internal and external communication, one of the pieces is that hopefully we in rural Grand Forks both see some changes with the communication pieces, trying to identify how we in the rural area, at local government there, are communicating. And we're at the regional district, we have, we've gone through, we've just closed a process of a governance review for the entire regional district in terms of the kind of high-level governance and how our processes work there. And so hopefully, there'll be some neat outcomes from that. In terms of communication is one of the items in there that we should see. There should be some good dialogue, again, figuring out how do we tighten up those processes and make sure that everybody is getting the maximum benefit, maximum value out of the work that we are doing there, as the city of Grand Forks and as rural Grand Forks. So that should be exciting. I'll postpone the rest of the miscellaneous stuff until after the next piece. I was going to touch on was the agenda item specifically that you have the attachment for, which is, we were fortunate enough and energetic, worked hard enough to secure some funding for both a review of our agricultural plan, which is something that we completed for the Boundary Area about five years ago in 2011, and we got some funding simultaneous essentially, or in a parallel process, for Material Health to develop a food security plan for the Boundary Area. So the agricultural plan funding is for a single year. It's matching funds, dollar for dollar. The food security plan development funding is for three years, and it's, again, it's matching funds, dollar for dollar. And so that was, those initiatives were put forward through the regional district again, so as the city and rural Grand Forks both being participants in that. And, you know, it's an exciting work. We, it makes sense to go out, for example, to the RFP to further request for proposals for those to get, because there's so much overlap. So, you know, they both deal with a lot of the food production issues and so on. But then the agricultural plan deals with, you know, a little bit of independent, you know, like nursery production wouldn't fall under the food security plan, nursery tree production. But not, you know, not much else that's in that agricultural plan other than non-food agricultural production doesn't also fall within the mandate or the scope of a food security plan. So the food security plan, the same way, deals with access issues. So vulnerable populations or those sorts of things. How do we make sure that they're accessing healthy, reasonably priced food? And so other than those kind of, getting to the spectrums, the rest of those plans are very synergistic. And so we're setting out now to go up for RFP, hopefully soon, through the regional district, to develop those two, those two plans. So update the agricultural plan and develop a new food security plan for the Boundary. So the request that you see here is for the, for your discussion and conversation. And I will leave that up to you to do that whenever that's appropriate. But in terms of whether you want to contribute to those plans, and as you say, I think at the very end of this list, I have a report, the language is pretty clear that it's not, we're not going to knock it forward with it if the city of Grand Forks does not come to the table. But we certainly like to see, you know, essentially, this is a request for contribution of some funds to make a clear statement of support for this kind of project, as much as funding for the project itself, because we've managed to secure the lion's share of these funds already. So I'm happy to answer any questions, given that I've been intimately involved with the development of both of these pieces, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
The wording of this, I might understand that this is $7,041, individual each municipal, because it says for the three holding.
That's correct, but if you scroll down. Yeah, so in terms of trying to identify an apportionment formula, so how do we figure out who contributes what to these sorts of things? You know, an agricultural plan is logically really focused on agricultural producing areas. And that's where, you know, like the initial production of the agricultural plan, that's where the funding came from for that, mostly those agricultural production areas. And then at the same time, a food security plan has much more to do with access to food issues and those components. And so those pieces have more to do with population, for example. So that's where, with this, again, as a starting point for putting some numbers on the table for that conversation, we came up with the idea of, okay, well, let's do 50/50. And we'll say 50% on population, 50% on agricultural area. And so that's the root of those numbers that you see there.
So I was going to say that $7,000 encompassed the three, but we have the lion's share of the $7,000.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Tripp, Counselor Hammett, and Counselor Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'm just wondering, what level of input would you be willing to look at from the city with this kind of a project?
Through the mayor. So typically, all of this is kind of group decision-making. So we designate a steering committee for these sorts of things. But any decisions come back to, any decisions of substance will come back to the board of the RDKP. And so regardless of who's on that steering committee, the decision-making, any material decisions essentially take, are finalized at the board level. That being said, the whole, the proposal that's involved with both of these projects, which is more so coming out of the food security end of things, because the agricultural plan is, should be fairly straightforward. So that, you know, there's, it's looking at what was five years ago, updating that, and bringing in new information, and consulting with the public. So the novel piece with the food security plan is going to be, it's around the establishment of essentially the council of advisors from the community. And so that would be where the primary decision-making will be, as opposed to with any elected officials anywhere. So there will be representation, you know, there's going to be representation from the city of Grand Forks, population there, regardless of, you know, so through the shelters, or the food banks, and so on and so forth, and community gardens, all those sorts of things.
That's what I was wondering.
And that is frankly, that's the strength of the, or that's part of the main outcomes, from my perspective, of that food security plan. And we'll be trying to develop an advisory body that would be able, so the city of Grand Forks, you as mayor councils, council would be able to go and get advice from that council on anything food-related, right? So likewise, as rural Grand Forks. That would serve as a source of, or a sounding board for ideas that happen that are related to agriculture and food in the region.
Thank you.
Counselor Hamilton.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We're 17% for the city of Grand Forks, and you base that on land area in the agricultural land reserve. I'm wondering, was any consideration taken in the calculation that most of that agricultural land reserve is in floodplain, is not used for farming purposes or for food production? I can't think of one right off the top, oh, maybe one, commercial food grower that's within the city of Grand Forks.
No.
Thank you.
I was going to look up the, I have some more detailed numbers that support that. Again, this was meant to come up with a starting point for conversation, and we talked about getting more elaborate in terms of trying to look at the proportion of utilized agricultural lands and those sorts of things, which would speak to what you're asking about. But at the same time, the more, it doesn't make as much sense to get into those complex formulas prior to the conversation, because this is where the conversation would happen, where that sort of, that sort of dialogue ought to take place, as opposed to bringing to the table a very complex formula that then everybody is going to have some issue with.
Counselor Butler.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is, to me, an important topic to be discussing. We live in a beautiful valley with a lot of very fertile soil that I think we could be utilizing a lot better. And in the years to come, food security might be important to us, as there's changing conditions in California. We live in a very privileged generation in a privileged country that's never seen any shortage of food, but there's no guarantee that that will always be the case. So I think it's important that, in a town where we are so privileged with the soil that we have and the growing conditions that we have, that we use it to the best of our ability. So just a couple of questions. With the previous plan, is that available on your website? Or can you send it over to us so we can look at it? And I'm just wondering, the action steps that have been taken from that previous plan? Have you found that you've had the funding and the time and the people to implement action steps from the previous plan? And what's changed in the last five years that you think needs updating?
Good question. So that plan, when it was developed, we ended up hiring a consultant, and that process did not go well. And we ended up letting go of the consultant after we were already deeply engaged in the project. And the consultation aspect of it with a project like that, really one of the main advantages, from my personal perspective, of hiring the consultant, is engaging with the stakeholders and the public in general, and getting their input in a way that's meaningful. And that was the piece, that was the piece that was missing essentially from the last round of that plan. And so we took the information we had from that plan, it was incomplete. We finished it at that point. This was before my time at the regional district. But I sat on the advisory council that helped it, and then I took over trying to complete that plan. But again, there was this glary omission of basically inadequate consultation with stakeholders and public. And so that's the main, that was the main rationale to the funders as well, to say, we have this plan, we know we were remiss in not, not basically delivering adequate consultation. That's the piece we like to remedy primarily with this new plan. That being said, we have had, we've done a good job, I think, in the interim of incorporating the appropriate pieces at the local government level in terms of, through rural Grand Forks, we went through our community planning process in the interim between, in those last five years. And that's where we incorporated a bunch of the action items relative to land use planning for the rural area that had to do with agriculture. So those were the pieces. There's also a good staff report that pulls out of that agricultural plan, pulls out of that, the relevant pieces for us in wearing our land use planning hats in terms of what's appropriate for us, what action items we need to be taking on.
Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. I think this is something that's very, very important. I agree with what Counselor Butler had said. A couple of things. This would be added to the requisition of the regional district if it, as a requisition? Or is this something that the regional district would be expecting each participant to kind of check for?
Dorsey.
Mr. Mayor, we would have the agreement that if we had a resolution to do this, we would be requisitioning the amount from the regional district. So the regional district will be paying the contractor. They'll just be invoicing us, so we're not all trying to, the contractors not all needing for these amounts, yeah?
Okay, I appreciate that. That was, it will come as the annual requisition from the regional district. Okay. Because quite frankly, I just want to say that I find the formula more than fair.
Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what we're doing right now in our community that will kind of support this process quite a bit is our SCP update, our Sustainable Community Plan update, which is our prevailing document in each of our local governments. It is our prevailing document that gives us the direction of our community over the course of the next several years. This is part and parcel of an ongoing process that we're seeing right now in our local governments. We're talking about wetland protections and preservations, natural capital, and partnering with the regional district in different things. But again, the food value would become the local sustainability component of it. I just heard a speaker speak last week about the, they talk about climate change and the California effect, and Counselor Butler is correct. We're at a privileged time in our lives in Canada, because as the warmer weather creeps up towards Canada, the growing seasons become longer. And they suspect that over the next couple hundred years, we'll be privileged to that, but then we'll start to realize the California effect on drought in our area. As we start to plan for these things, these sustainability folks are talking about how to prepare for that and move towards that in the future. The other thing that we talked about is the carbon, the carbon creation of developing food in your community and shipping it out, and then buying food that's coming in from another area. And the economic development value to that money that's being saved in your community is immense. They're really starting to realize the economic generation that happens with this. So the food charter is a, or not food charter, but the plan, the long-term plan here is something that's going to show more value than you're just seeing in food protection. There's also another thing, another process that we might be marking upon that maybe come up later on, is a sustainability charter for our valley that we might want to start talking about, is how we're going to approach these objectives, and how it makes it easier for council to present and look at these topics under the value of a charter, how we operate and how we look at things a little bit differently.
Have any other questions? You have any other questions? Councilor Butler.
I'm just wondering if we need a motion to bring this back for a decision at our next regular meeting?
You receive it today, this should be in the council meeting or because it'll be a, it'll be a part of the budget piece. Right now, it's, it's within the parameters of our budget. We would be able to have the endorsement of council to endorse this, but then we'll just move it into our budget process and you'll see it in the budget, overall budget for 2017.
So Director Russell, do you have the labor to continue more on some of the other subjects?
Yes, please.
I have a list here, but I'm sure you have the same list.
All right. Thank you. And one piece that ties very well to, to Councilor Butler's prior question was one neat initiative, one of the outcome, one of the, the main recommendations that came out of the Boundary Agricultural Plan as well as the, the Central Coonies Agricultural Plan planning process, as well as some of the plans that came out of the East Coonies, was the need for extension. So this is agricultural plan, not food security plan, the need for extension services that really is provincial mandated, but is not being done by the province in, in a adequate way because there's so vastly under-resourced for the people that are there. And in all of those plans, it was very quickly recognized, the local government doesn't have the funding capacity to develop, deliver that, right? So those pieces, many of the other action items in those plans were, were dependent on that piece being delivered in somewhere or another. And just right now, we're, we're now through a consortium of all three regional districts, which then means basically all the local governments east of the bound, like the boundary and everything east from here, are talking about trying to develop a model of a shared service to, to show, to demonstrate, basically pilot, to demonstrate to the province that shared extension services can work and would be productive. So that would be one of those action items. It wasn't done, but now there's this neat potential collaboration to try to develop, deliver that on a, on a tri-regional district scale, which again is a fairly unique level of collaboration because normally it doesn't, doesn't happen at that scale. So that's, that's exciting. And I guess, so a couple of other pieces I'm just going to touch on in terms of, of rural Grand Forks, kind of future pieces. One is that we just closed through Boundary Economic Development, we issued a request or proposal for Trails Master Planning Process, which basically would be upfront for us to be able to say, here's, again, sort of a significant amount of money into doing some good community consultation about how we ought to be managing our trails networks across the boundary. And so, because we need to have that piece done so that our decision making, again, for me, as rural Grand Forks, I have some backstop to be able to say, well, we've done this consultation, we've, you know, got a clear message from the public about where they would like to see, you know, the one, obviously the most contentious issues is motorized versus non-motorized transportation and where, where trails and where those are. So that RFP just closed, that process will be started. That should give us a lot of value, hopefully for both the city and rural Grand Forks moving ahead for that.
Councilor Hammond.
I just have up on my screen right now, the Thompson, Oakenog and Regional Rail Trails Tourism Strategy 2016 to 2022. I'm wondering, is this their master plan? Did you get a copy of this?
I have not seen that document particularly, I don't believe, but we have been in conversation with them over the last year in terms of trying to figure out how best to move forward and, and how to develop our, our FFP, given that our contacts are different, to, to make sure that we get the most value out of that process. Another piece, I guess, the final piece I just want to touch on in, in terms of building on some of the comments from the, the delegations this morning, was one of the, for rural Grand Forks, we purchased the Hardy Mountain Dukabor Village, or what's known as the Hardy, the old McCorduff Village type. And we are in the process of trying to do some planning and get a bit of a phased approach to decide, decide what we, how do we want to, what do we vision the future for that location being? And somebody made a comment, I think it was Terry Woodruff this morning, made a comment about the, the art gallery as kind of a leapfrogging point for the other venues in the community for things like the Boundary Museum and so on. And, you know, that's at the core of whatever we develop, I think we, we all recognize that that's the value there with our heritage venues and so on, is making sure we can network them in a way that, that means that when somebody shows up, they're connected to all those different pieces. And so that's kind of, you know, that being at the core, and we have a lot of, of creative ideas coming forward from the, the community about what to do with that, but we're still very much in the, the recent planning stages there. So that, that should be kind of exciting because it's a gorgeous location, although it's going to take a little bit of work to get, point where we can utilize it. And that's all.
I have a few topics here on bullets regarding, would you like to touch on these? One of them is budget process, strategic plan and shared services.
Could I just ask a question?
My apologies, go ahead. Go ahead, Councilor Butler.
With, with the purchase of the McCorduff Village, Dave Dietrich, who is director on the board of the Boundary Museum Society, worked very, very hard on, on restoring that, that, that property. So are you working with either Dave or the Boundary Museum on the development of that property?
Yes, although we haven't gotten to the point, at this point, we've been collecting basically information, ideas and information. So the Boundary Museum Society is clearly the, you know, they're clearly in a position to be involved in whatever decision making takes place. And, you know, from, from my perspective in rural Grand Forks, ideally, you know, they would be, they would have the capacity or the, or the ability to take on a significant amount of, of whatever comes of that, right? The, the, if there's no, I'm not in a position where I, I think it makes sense for the, for my constituents to be taking on the operation, you know, through taxation, through the operation or, or kind of delivery of whatever service comes out of that, that facility. So ideally, and that's been very clear since the beginning, if we have some kind of partnership with a local organization, there's some that are obviously in a position that makes sense there, right? And so Dave, yes, we've been on and off of conversation, but frankly, we've been slow, I've been slow in, in trying to figure out what that phased approach is because we can't, we can't move forward until we know what, how we're going forward. And, and it's been a challenge trying to decide what do we do first, what, what, because we don't know where we're going yet, right? So, and he has been very helpful over the last while. And so hopefully moving forward, we can see more engagement with that particular individual, but, but the society as well in whether a capacity would make sense.
Hello, that's Johnson. I'm just curious, because I didn't make the meeting, unfortunately. I know that in the TLC's project for that village, they ended up with a, a bunch of things that they had to fix. Did they even give a fixer-up or did they even do something ready to move in? I'm just curious where, what that's at.
It's going to cost a lot of money to get it to a place where we can bring people back into that building now. There's a lot of work, they, they, the, the Land Conservancy put an enormous amount of money and, and work into that through a bunch of local people as well as some non-local people. But there's still a great deal of work and that's part of it is to, to, to get, basically at this point, we need to get some funding to get somebody with the expertise to go get in there and say, it's going to cost us $400,000 or, or $200 or what have you, to, to get to a point where it can be habitable again. Habitable from the perspective of bringing people in there as, in whatever facility or capacity that facility needs.
So Director Russell, I have a list here. Should you wish to entertain some of these, but if not, we could postpone them for another meeting. Couple of them I want to, so you can get yourself prepped. Minister meetings, UVCM commissions, recreation commission process. Today, budget process, strategic plan and shared services. Would you like to elaborate on any of these or do you want to?
I'll take them all. Take them all. That's good. Well, I'm not sure what your timelines are, but I'm happy to speak to as much as that, as of that as we'd like to. So maybe I'll start with the, the budget process because that probably has implications for some of the other issues. So one of the pieces that is really uniquely different between the regional district model and, and that's kind of what I assume is part of what you're getting to, right? Between the regional district model and the municipal model of budgeting is that we are obliged to operate each of our services as if nothing else existed essentially, budget, budget-wise. So we cannot run deficits in our budgets for any particular service because we cannot, we cannot move funds from another service to, into that particular service. So something like, like Heritage, so the, my, the rural Grand Forks Heritage Service, that budget has to be set and, and I cannot take money from another budget to offset expenses in, in a budget like that. So when we go into budgeting, so for myself, I go into budgeting with about thirty independent budgets because they, they all stand alone. And each of those budgets, so, so rural Grand Forks Heritage, for example, it's, there's no, there's no contributors to that budget other than rural Grand Forks, which makes sense. Something like the, the Grand Forks Aquatic Center, obviously the city of Grand Forks is also partnered there. So when we go into budgeting, it's, it's a regional district budget, but it's dictated, it's, it's, decision makers there are whoever is stakeholders in that budget. So whoever pays to a budget at the, at the regional district is involved in setting the budgets for those facilities. So for example, again, in terms of those budget constraints, a good example is, you know, we can't, through the city and rural Grand Forks, through the regional district, we together can't move funds from a budget that has to do with swimming pool to something that is taken place at the, at the park. Because those are independent budget items and, and so we stick them independent. And so we go in, you know, our budgeting process starts about now, so we already, the very preliminary stages are started and we will be in it until, until budgets are closed basically. So for the next three or four months, we'll be, we'll be in the budgeting process with all those budgets. Are there anything more specific that you wanted to touch on? I think the biggest piece to, to communicate there is how different art process works than the, the municipal process and the, and, and the, there's, I really, understanding the regional district process, I think it's an incredibly valuable tool for the province, you know, for everybody in the province to have, to be able to get into those agreements, to be able to set, establish a, a shared funding model to fund a service, right? That being said, there's all sorts of obstacles in terms of that being delivered well around the province as well. So there's many examples of really good use of that tool. I think there's also lots of examples of where the, the budget model of regional districts falls apart a little bit as well.
There's limitations as well.
Absolutely. And that, and so, you know, again, there's very little flexibility in our, in our, you know, for example, our budgets are set, the, the funding mo, the funding allocation model for those budgets is set by bylaw. And so we, we can't just sit down at the table, so for the pool, for example, we can't sit down at the budgeting table and decide, well, I, I don't want to pay as much into this anymore. I want to pay less than my forty-five percent or what have you, because that's set by bylaw. So those, those, I can, I can lobby to reduce a budget for the city of Grand Forks and lobby to reduce a budget or increase a budget, but you can't, you can't lobby in, in the budgeting process to pay more or less of your share of that budget, if that, if that makes sense. So that's one of the big restrictions on that, right? And, and frankly, we've been, I think, we're with, with that, you know, recreation services is one of the big budgets that causes a great deal of friction in other areas of the province because people aren't at the table as partners in those budgets, right? Is where, where, so even looking over the hill to the west, you see where the Trail Rec Center cost the municipality a great deal, there's a lot of tension between the other participants in that service because of how their model works. Any questions? Strategic plan, you, that was one of the pieces. And I guess, I'm not sure what the, what the, the kind of focus that you questioned there would be, but in terms of, you know, we went through a thorough planning process, I think just before my time, so a number of years ago, I think four years ago, five years ago. And we just started, we went through a, a review of that strategic plan this last year because from my perspective, you know, as a rural Grand Forks, one of the partners, one of the local government partners in this thing, the strategic plan ought to be guiding pretty much everything we're doing. And, and I think that the, it's, it's kind of fallen by the wayside a little bit. And so I was happy to go through that process, but, but we have, I would say, a person in strategic plan. And, and part of that is the challenge of bringing together thirteen different member governments to come to some agreement on what, what the kind of primary goals and objectives and visions for the future are. But I'd certainly like to see a plan with a little stronger in terms of direction. I'm not sure what you have, is there anything more specific that you need to know?
Well, I think along the lines that a lot of times we get caught up in strategic plans as being the, the primary focus of our organizations and pretty as the elected officials that are making that strategic direction, whereas the community has already spoken when we have our Sustainable Community Plan or our OCP, they've demonstrated their values. I think one of the things that we could probably do better collectively is report out on the advancements of our OCPs, of our official community plans and talk about those and tie them to, to some strategic priorities. But when we talk about OCPs, we tend to, we tend to leave them behind and we say, well, then we've already done that. But if we go into our OCPs, they're actually very robust documents that talk about things that are, that we're talking about every day at the table, the council's talking about. Strategic priorities are really things that you should be plucking from your OCP that would really direct them because the community's already said which direction they would like to go. Then we, then what communities will do is they'll do a major overhaul of their official community plans and then the councils will try their, tie their strategic direction to those. That's a model that I've seen develop over BC, but sometimes communities will just focus on council strategic priorities. So again, to, to Director Russell's point is, is, you know, it's, it's a, it's a model that, you know, it's pretty hard to bring all those elected officials together to provide a real strategic direction, but he also has a, an OCP on, you know, the forms, it's on this side of the hill? That really gives him his, his ability to kind of grind out on a lot of the issues.
And if I may, to add to that, so there's only, you know, the, I have a community plan that engages a lot of the constituents, right? So the thirty, two, thirty, three hundred constituents in rural Grand Forks, that's their avenue to provide input to that process. The other piece of the strategic plan from the regional district perspective is, that I think is important, is recognizing that, so the city of Grand Forks is equally a member of the regional district as I am from rural Grand Forks. So we're two members of this entity, both regional districts, right? I think that at times that gets lost in the shuffle and, and it gets seen as somehow, you know, rural Grand Forks is part of the regional district, the city is an independent entity. The, the complication there is that the, all of, all of rural Grand Forks' staff support comes from the regional district, right? That's, that's really the, the only distinction. That being said, the strategic plan for that organization that we both are members of ought to be really, the piece that's missing from our committee plans that is necessary there is speaking to the value, what's the return we get on investment in that organization, right? So as, as member local governments. And so that's the piece that is challenging, I think, but also where, where that, you know, a component at least of that strategic plan ought to be making sure that that entity is delivering the best service that it can to us as local governments. the best service that it can to us as local governments.
That's one thing when we talk about the minister meetings and the ability for council and the area director to provide some strategic direction they'd like to work on together, develop the plan, and they go after the grants for those things. I mean, that's where your power is, is a meeting with the province or with Rowley's position with AKPLG. That's where all of your power sits, is the ability to harness this as one value moving towards the funding end objective, rather than it being, you know, one person thinking, I'd like to do this, I'd like to do that. But it's really everybody saying, what is it that we commonly need here? And let's provide a strategic direction and go after that goal.
I also have shared service dotted down here. And I mean, again, in terms of the budgeting process, essentially, all of, well, not all, but the vast majority of my budgets at Rural and Forests are shared services, right? And that's the essence of the regional district model, and that's the beauty of it. Aside from all the problems that come from that same beautiful aspect, that is what is helpful about that process, right? One shared service in particular that is important for us, I think, around this table to think about in a way, in terms of figuring how do we want to make it better in boundary economic development? Because that is a table where, you know, we have, frankly, been challenged to figure out how, again, to deliver the best value to the members, the stakeholders in that service. And so we're two of them, as the city of Grand Forks and Rural and Forests, but then there, you know, there are three more as well, being the West Boundary and the Midway. And so economic development is one of the really interesting pieces to me in terms of shared service, because really, you know, if the city of Grand Forks is making economic development decisions, probably most of them, or a large number of them at least, have something to do with Rural and Forests, and vice versa. Whatever economic development decisions are going on in Rural and Forests, there's probably a lot of those that have implications for the city as well. So it'd be nice to have a better avenue to share, to dialogue, to debate about where those resources go. And so the one, the current approach that going into budgeting, we will be taking to that budgeting process, is to go in and add a line item to that budget for economic development to say, here's a line item for Rural and Forests and the city of Grand Forks projects. So that, for example, and again, it gets challenging, because those allocations to the budgets are all fixed based on proportion. So we have to make that fair, whatever that process looks like. But be able to make it clear that in the budget for boundary economic development, which is a, you know, two-hundred-thousand-dollar budget, or nearly so, that we have, there is room there for the city of Grand Forks and Rural and Forests to make a decision and to recommend that we move forward on something with a process that makes sense and gets actually delivered. Instead of, instead of right now, any decision that, you know, so if the city of Grand Forks or Rural and Forests made a decision about some project, it would still have to go to that council table, or that board table, a committee table, and that committee doesn't have a good process to allocate sub-regional projects, essentially, is what it comes down to. So that would be one of those budgeting pieces to add value in a productive way for us as shared services.
Congressman Tritt, and Congressman Thompson. Uh, Congressman Butler, Hammond, sorry. So focused on your last name.
So two-hundred thousand dollars goes to boundary economic development. That's a lot of money, and I'm just wondering, can you give me specific good news projects that have come out of that over the previous years?
So the lion's share of that budget is dedicated to the contractor, the contract, to deliver economic development services, which is through Community Futures. And so Community Futures would be in a better position to, with the delegations this morning, to speak to the various initiatives and so on that have been delivered under them. You know, the reality is that they use, from my perspective, they use that contract to help deliver a great number of the projects that are taking place in the community that they're researching. So things like, I need agendas to look at to refresh my memory. But, you know, the support through the chamber, for example, would be one of the initiatives that is funded through BEDC in part, right? As well as the development of that sort of thing happens through the Community Futures arm.
Community Futures. Funding is gone, as of February, I believe, there won't be any Community Futures funding.
We'll have none.
From Community Futures.
Which?
To the chamber.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so things like in Just Kootenays, so like bringing, I would suggest you look at an agenda for the BEDC. And each, every month, you have that list of their update on the different projects. So advertising, so the boundary branding initiatives, right? The advertising you see out on the highway, whether that's billboards for the boundary, Rock Creek, or whether that's, you know, there's at the rest areas west of town, there's almost Big Mac signs and stuff like that. So there's the maps, the little handout maps of the Kootenays, for example, that have little sketch, I don't remember who does them. Those pieces are all through, come through these. Right now, on the back, if you take that map with the Kootenays and flip it over, it's got a map, it's got the ten things to do in the boundary, right? Those are the kinds of initiatives that are coming out of that project.
So those maps are provided free. They're paid for by the advertisers, because I know the people in the company that manufactures those and puts them together and sells the ads. So this is going to be a tough question for you, but in your opinion, do you feel that that two-hundred thousand dollars could be better spent?
Yes.
So what's your recommendation?
The question is how, this has been, so I, as the chair of the BEDC for the last year, that's been my primary goal, is figure out how do we take those funds and do a better job of getting the values for those investments? And it's really not clear what the appropriate mechanism is. It is clear to me that we ought to be getting more value for our money. Part of that is Community Futures, part of it is the project, I mean, the contract, part of it is the project. So I certainly don't want to speak negatively about Community Futures, because they do a great deal for the funding that we contribute to them. At the same time, the model of service delivery for economic development is an issue. So it's, you know, so with the city, for example, right, surely, I suspect that you're frustrated with how, you know, that interface between having some of your own economic development, and you've got this other service that you're a member of, and making those things align in productive ways must be a challenge. And for Rural and Forests, the BEDC is our only avenue for economic development, and it's frustrating. But the identification of what the appropriate path forward is not clear either, because it's certainly not extinguish the service in my mind, because there's a value there in having everybody, you know, as CAO was speaking to, the notion of us as a boundary group going to say, this is something that, you know, we care about in terms of economic development is very helpful for things like leveraging funding through the total and so on. But the reality is, is that that needs to be fixed somehow. And the piece that I was speaking to, that in terms of earmarking a component of that budget that is recognized to be intended to be at the direction to some degree, or the advice of the city of Grand Forks and Rural and Forests is a step in the right direction to be able to say, okay, here's a project that we all agree is valuable, here's, now we have a tool to actually do that.
So maybe we need to look at that as a different, a different way to manage that, because that's a lot of money that, I think, a different template should be looked at.
And also to clarify, for this last year, for example, I'm not, I don't have the numbers here, but I think that the budget is around a hundred and ninety-something thousand. And again, roughly speaking, half of that would be dedicated towards projects that are not dictated by the contract right now. And so for this year, for example, we're well under budget on those projects. Again, because it's a cumbersome process to decide how to issue those projects. So a bunch of that will then decrease taxation for next year, because we didn't spend that budget level.
Congressman Thompson, back to Congressman.
Thank you, Your Worship. The BEDC was instrumental in keeping OmniTrax in our area. They worked with the city, the Village Midway, Open Talbot, or pardon me, Interfor, Pacific Abrasives, when OmniTrax threatened to no longer provide rail service. Since that time, I don't know of any other deliverables. And, you know, the contractor, although, you know, they were with the BEDC, it might be prudent for them to make presentations to the individual councils so that we know what we're getting for the dollars that we're contributing. That causes me really grave concern, because I am not seeing anything, nor have I seen anything concrete that benefits Grand Forks. So perhaps through your worship and Director Russell encourage the contractor to come and make presentations so that not only councils, but the public know what we're getting for the money spent.
So for that particular piece, for the actual financials, I would encourage you to look at the agendas and the minutes from those meetings. So particularly the agendas, because they have the background information that touches on things of where those funds get spent. In terms of projects, I think absolutely, maybe this would be a good topic to come back to, that another committee of the whole is looking at what those kinds of projects are delivered through that committee. But, you know, things like the food security plan and the agriculture plan, those are all delivered through BEDC, right? That service is our tool to deliver all of those things that are, you know, focused on economic development that cross our boundary line.
We need to accomplish the agendas. We don't get any information on the BEDC.
So, but they're all available, right? And I, right, it's similar to my situation personally, you know, wearing my Rural and Forests hat. I don't get, nobody is handing me an agenda for your meetings here, but it's up to me to decide, to look those up, right? And just the same way, in this case, you're a member, you have a representative at that table, but it would clutter your inboxes overwhelmingly if all of the different agendas and minutes from the regional district were sent to you. That being said, they are all posted on CivicWeb, and so they're easy to access.
Congressman.
So going back to shared services, two things pop into my mind, and I'm just curious as to whether the RDKB has an appetite for increasing their portion of shared revenue for the airport and for Galler, too.
We've already discussed it at the regional.
Well, but can we hear what the answer is?
So this is, if I may, yeah, this is where, this is why it's taken us so long for me to get here, I think, is because we have to be careful about, if, I can't be here, I'm not here in the capacity as a representative from the regional district, right? I'm here as the elected representative for the residents all around Grand Forks. And so we have to be careful about which conversations we have, to make sure that they're not conversations that ought to take place at a table that's through a committee of the regional district already. Because the city has their representative there, I'm there, for whatever kind of those kinds of conversations. So things like the airport conversation, we had that conversation at the economic development meeting, right? And you're always welcome to come to those, they take place in Grand Forks as well. But again, and, you know, at this time, there was not an interest in moving ahead with that support. But again, the conversation about what that looks like, and the decision-making, has to take place at that table, right? So I, that's where we start getting into uncomfortable territories, if we're talking about decision-making.
Okay, I'm not asking you to make a decision, I just want to know if there has been a decision.
Yeah, and so the, you know, the outcome of that, and again, that's again where the boundary economic development committee is the appropriate place to take it. At the same time, that kind of request is, you know, it's a challenge in that venue at the same time, right? But so from my perspective, for Rural and Forests, and given my budgeting constraints, I, you know, I would be very open to requests for particular capital improvements and so on at the airport, but a request for operational support essentially has to go to referendum. That's the process that we would have to go through to make that happen. And at this point, I think the reality of that passing in the referendum, I think, is very slim. And so I'm very hesitant to move in that direction at this point. Again, recognizing that expenses for some capital improvements, that are gas tax eligible, is a much more flexible piece of budgeting for the regional district, for Rural and Forests, for the regional district. And so that could be an avenue, if there's requests on that, that we'd be open to that in the future.
This is why I just love this model that you're here, because it saves me a lot of RDK reports.
That's right.
Because they get it straight from the source.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions? I'll just briefly touch on the rural dividend fund. I guess you're aware that the city did get the maximum grant of a hundred thousand.
Yes.
Congratulations.
So as a topic of economic development, the rural dividend fund included a partnership approach that you could partner up with groups, and you could get up to five-hundred thousand dollars, but forty percent would have to be funded from the partners involved. And a lot of that can be in kind capacity. But again, this comes back down to the initiative that we're talking about today, having Director Russell at the table today to start to solidify things. So for instance, if the community decided they were going to look at building a community center, and they want to explore that one day down the road, well, this opportunity and this funding would provide the seed money to start to look into and do a feasibility study on that, determine where it would be best situated. But right now, we have a hundred thousand dollars. We told council we'd be bringing back the plan, we kind of put a kind of a, we put a plan together to apply for the funding, but we're going to talk to council now about that funding. But that was based on the, originally, we were looking at the lands development showcase, because that has yielded us close to three-quarters of a million dollars in revenue and new taxation. So we know that that's a positive economic development model for the city's operations, because it takes land out of our inventory, and it generates taxation, which then is more robust for the city's revenue coming in to pay for services for the city. But this hundred thousand dollars we have has the opportunity right now for us to explore it a little bit more, a little bit more in more detail with Director Russell to talk about it from a, you know, which direction do we want to go? We know that we have a regional strategic priority, we know we have some OCP expectations, we know that we're updating ours, we know that we have some common goals. Maybe if we had a common goal that involved the chamber, involved everybody, and we're all walking down the sidewalk together, it would prove to be a very powerful project, rather than the city, like Rowley pointed out, is we're going out on our own, doing our own economic development initiatives. It'd be nice to see us moving collectively with everybody down on a plan that is going to yield us something in the future. And we have a hundred thousand dollars to work with, so I could approach it much stronger.
So any other questions?
Just one. And this might not even be relevant at the point, but I'm just wondering, have you got any sites on the rodeo grounds, you know, the boundary horse association where they have the riding wing? I was out there. I was out there a month or so ago, and I've been out there many times before when there's been horse events going on, and that is a beautiful facility. I'm wondering if there's any grants available to help the boundary horse association or the rural Grand Forks and maximize the use of that facility, because I don't, I think it's really underutilized for the potential that it has, because we have a gem there that most people in this area don't realize that we have. I know there's an issue with one entrance in and out, which can create a problem, but I'm just wondering if you've got your sights on that at all.
I'm certainly open to the conversation, but I haven't had, I haven't had any comment and requests of us looking into it. So it's worth conversation, there's certain grants for funding, depending on what the volume of money is, right? It could be earmarked for something like that. But no, it's not in my current list of to do this.
Yes, okay, thanks.
So unless there's any...
Can I just say one thing? On your $200,000 for your economic development, have you ever considered helping, like, operators start out with some of that as a bit of seed money? One of the past communities, the MDA Big River or Big Lakes, that's what they did, is they put $200,000 aside to help operators start up so we could get, like, say, the Ubro people, literally the seed money, to start them up? Would that ever be a consideration?
I think the limitation for us has to do with the very particular concern that we cannot be funding a private business anymore than anyone else. And so, so again, that in my mind is part of the more challenging work to quantify that Community Futures does in the sense of trying to help support, let's say, entrepreneurial businesses or small businesses get going, that comes from our support through that BEDC in part, right? But it's harder to, it's harder to identify, it's harder to assess, like, okay, well, here's the, here's the $10,000 that, you know, went into making three more businesses successful, but that's the avenue, because that way it's openly kind of accessible to whomever is interested in pursuing, as opposed to targeting an individual, any kind of individual business-specific dedication sometimes.
Thank you.
So unless there's any other questions, again, I'd like to thank Director Russell for taking the time, joining us, for the, which looks to be many more in the future, a very productive and collaborative effort on the two regional and, I should say, rural and city Grand Forks side, so we can be stronger in numbers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. A good start.
Hope it wasn't too long, did it deter you from the next one?
No, 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 every other one, I think was.
Was every other one? That's not what my list says.
Okay.
Thank you again. So may I have a motion to receive for information, the discussions and the presentations from Area E Director Roly Russell regarding boundary area agricultural plan, food security project update, and the other discussions we had. Counselor Butler, all in favor, anyone opposed, so carried. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Roly, very informative.
I'd like to call about a five-minute recess, please. Call this meeting back to order. Okay, our next is the presentations from staff from our Manager of Development Engineering Services, subject matter floodplain exemption, request for property located at 6116 12th Street, legally described as Lot 1, District Lot 382, Plan KAP 90023. And the recommendation is, the committee of the whole recommend to council to approve the site specific exemption request to vary the flood construction level from 516,000 meters to 515,600 meters to install a hot water tank and heating source 0.6096 meters off the floor of the first level of the home mounted on a meter stand, metal stand, subject to the applicant registering a Section 219 covenant on title saving the city harmless in case of flooding and refer the decision to the October 11, 2016 regular meeting. May I have a mover on that, please, Counselor Thompson? Any other elaborate? Okay, all in favor, anyone opposed, so carried. Again, the Manager of Development Engineering Services, subject matter subdivision application for 6370 12th Street and 6380 12th Street. And the recommendation is that council approve two subdivision applications for 6370 12th Street, 6380 12th Street at the October 11, 2016 regular meeting. May I have a mover, please? Counselor Tripp, all in favor, anyone opposed, so carried. Again, to the Manager of Development Engineering Services, subject matter memorandum update on progress in the PetroMax SO and Tim Horton's development. Recommendation, council, committee of the whole, receive for information the memorandum update on the progress in the PetroMax SO and Tim Horton's development from the Manager of Development and Engineering Services. May I have a mover? Counselor Butler, to our Manager of Development Engineering.
Thank you, Worshe. So we have a meeting with the Ministry of Transportation and the developer and their engineers on Tuesday, last Tuesday in Nelson. And so the engineers and the Minister of Transportation are working through the access for the development. They're working diligently and very hard to come up with a design that will work for that section of highway. They are expecting the preliminary designs to be complete by the end of this year, and then they'll go to the Ministry of Transportation for review, and then there'll be some back and forth, and then the ministry will grant an access permit once the preliminary designs are complete. That's pretty much where we are at this point.
Thank you. Counselor Hammond?
So just curious, does that mean that PetroMax will not sign off on the property sale deal until such time that they have full approval from OT?
To our CEO, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, no, they're not prepared to purchase the property without the access agreement from the Ministry of Transportation. Their whole development is contingent on that. Developer is into this now for many thousands of dollars in engineering. He wants to make sure he has this in order. That does not mean the city would not entertain another offer, but another offer may be subject to highway access because it is highway commercial frontage. So right now, if this developer walks away, let's just say hypothetically, the developer walked away, we would already have the engineer designs that we would be able to show, the highway access to a future developer. So if we have somebody else come forward with another offer, we would still have the ability to discuss that with them. But I think in the spirit of good business, we don't have any other offers, and I would just recommend to council to stay the course on this one because they are a long ways down the road on this. They are making a mean investment.
Counselor Butler?
Yeah, I thought that they had these designs done up quite a while ago, they've been working on this highway access now for quite a while, and I'm wondering why they still don't have any designs of course.
To our CEO, Mr. Allen.
Mr. Mayor, the one developer, the engineer had went away, so there's a couple of situations that developed through this situation that we were made aware of. One was an emerging family issue with the one person, which drew one of the engineers away for approximately four weeks, and then subsequent to that, the other engineer had holidays planned for September, and he wasn't around in September. So this was the follow-up meeting with their engineers. So again, it was out of the city's control, the city has done, council's done, everything to put it onto the plate of the ministry and the developer, and that's where they are right now. So unfortunate circumstances have arose, and that drew the delays.
To our Manager of Development Engineering.
Just to add to that, the Minister of Transportation did say it'd be a minimum of six to eight months to get through this process because they take their time and they want to do it right, so it's pretty standard.
So again, if I understand this property is nothing unusual. All in, Counselor Hammond?
I remember getting some report on this a little while back, where they had been granted right-hand access only at this point, off of Highway 3, and left-hand access, westbound access would have to be accessed through 75th, which would be going down 27th and then around behind, coming in through their access lane. I'm just wondering why that wasn't acceptable to them, because I've been in other communities where this is quite normal, but the Tim Hortons in Richmond on Number 3 Road, for example, only has right-hand entrance. They have to come in through the back if they're going to come in from the south going north on Number 3 Road, they have to make a turn down the next street and then come in through the back lane. So this isn't unusual, I have seen it before, I'm just wondering why they don't proceed with that moment, because then it said that they could look at a dedicated left-hand turn lane down the line further, but at least now they've been granted right-hand access coming from the west and 27th Street through 75th off of the, going west.
To our CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So through you, the situation is, the, you know, in larger centers, there's a larger population to draw on, so a right-in and right-out would work if you're in a community with 200, 300,000 people or 100,000 people. For our community, the developer needs the left-hand, he needs people traffic from the west, the east, and the local traffic to be able to access the site without encumbrance. A community of 4,000 with a drawing population of the other 3200 around us provides them a business model that makes it, so they're looking at our community. For him to invest that probably about $350,000 to $400,000 for a right-in and right-out, that's a throwaway. I think he started to look at the numbers and said that he would rather get everything in order first rather than throw away the right-in and right-out because it would have to meet the standard, it was a temporary right-in and right-out, but it would then have to meet the standard of the final engineering designs by the Ministry of Transportation. So he took a step back, and another part of this process, just if I could jump in with this, was the working with an adjacent property owner. The adjacent property owner was involved with this process for about 45 days of conversation, and that also created some delays, because as an approving officer, we must show for the community interest that there was a significant attempt to involve them because they will not get highway access in the future according to the Ministry of Transportation. So they will have to now approach the owner of the property, that once the property's changed title, they'll have to enter into conversation with the folks from PetroMax to have access. They've declined to participate in the process, they've done it in writing, we have all the stuff with the approving officer's perspective, but we must have met that. So there's been a bunch of different pieces that have created these delays. And I can tell you that it's good business what's happening right now, so after the fact, you as council don't have people coming back to you saying, well, they didn't do this, they didn't do that. This is meant to be thorough and wholesome to make sure that there is no holes in the process. And again, I think the time is such that it is natural, this process, it just feels like we're slowing things up, but I don't think that anybody really is. I think the one thing they want to make sure is not one life is lost as a result of people turning in off that highway and using that crosswalk, so.
So I'm going to call the question, all in favor, anyone opposed, so carried. Moving on to our, again, to the Manager of Development Engineering Services, subject matter memorandum update on the sustainable community plan presentation. The recommendation is, committee of the whole receives for information the memorandum update on the sustainable community plan presentation from the Manager of Development and Engineering Services. May I have a mover, please? Counselor Thompson? All in favor, anyone opposed? Would the manager like to give a brief update on this? To who we call a question?
I'm going to let Graham take over at this point. He's been working very hard on this.
Thank you, Mayor Connaught. So I'm just going to give a very brief update on our process, keeping council fully in the loop as we make progress towards a viable sustainable community plan. It's really exciting, and there's been a lot of really good discussions in the community, and I think it's going to help really define a really interesting feature in a lot of different aspects that we're looking into. So today we'll look at just what the status is, what we've done so far, particularly how we've been investigating environmental sustainability, going back to the open house in June and some of the things we've learned since then, the components of the Strategic Energy Emissions Plan and the food security and sustainable agriculture issues that have been brought forward. So this is kind of a brief topic update in advance of requests for decisions regarding amendments to the plan that would come forward, just kind of to familiarize with the aspects that are being discussed. So back in the spring, we introduced the notion of the update and the themes that would be addressed over the year and a half timeline. So there's five key themes, environmental sustainability, affordable housing, asset management, transportation and infrastructure, development permit areas, and, oh yeah, I got cut off, that's okay, I'll remember it, development permit areas and implementation and administration, which is the zoning bylaws and others, bylaws that would come out from that. So in June, we held an open house specifically on the five themes and environmental sustainability in particular, and then we undertook referrals to agencies on our full referral list to get feedback about the topics and timeline to see if there's, you know, if there's information we could, we should consider and that sort of thing. We've been having a number of discussions with community members and groups, agency representatives, and, you know, continue bringing forward those topics, and sometimes it takes, you know, a while to get meetings together on some of the topics, but I'll let you know what we found so far. So some of the big themes coming out of the first couple of months of engagement on this was, one of the participants at the June meeting talked about the commons and the sustainable community plan needing to really see how does, what's a community's role in protecting the air, the water, the biodiversity, the soil, the soil, the things that are the inheritance going forward to future generations? How do we protect the commons? How do we support that in our work? And I think that's a really good challenge for a community plan to think about, how do we, in our planning work, really make sure a community recognizes this and helps move forward with it? Really strong response about connecting people to nature through the trail network, so very in line with Director Russell's discussion about the Trails Master Plan and having access to viewing water and wetlands throughout the community. People wanted to see better protection for those riparian areas and wetlands, they thought that they're a tremendous asset for the city, but people didn't really know how amazing they were. I guess they wanted better recognition and protection, and we've been bringing some reports forward to council about some of our options for protecting those areas. There is really good discussion about protection for agricultural activities even on a very small urban scale. Director Russell identified the agricultural land reserve portions in the city. We also have agricultural production in front yards, backyards, half-acre lots, one-acre lots, and how does the city look to make sure that that's viable for homeowners or for small business people who are trying to add some value from their productive land? So that's being recognized in our discussions. And also opportunities for tiny and small homes was identified in the first theme, and we'll be bringing that forward to the next theme, which is affordable housing. So that will be on the agenda for upcoming workshops. So some of the really deep and vast agative work for us has been looking at how wetland values are, natural area values are protected in the city. And for city-owned property, we've identified Johnson Flats for instance, that might be appropriate for a natural area or park dedication. And then for private land, there's the options of strengthening the environmentally sensitive development permit area. So it undertakes a thorough review to look at all of the areas of wetlands across our city, all the areas of streamside vegetation, and do our policies and bylaws appropriately protect those, right? Are there guidelines in place about vegetation and ecosystem protection there? And we've been looking at what other communities have been able to accomplish, and we'll definitely be bringing forward recommendations for council's considerations. This goes hand in hand with groundwater protection measures. So we have really high water tables in the city, and there's many septic, septics in unsurfaced parts of the city where we don't have sewer. There's also impacts on groundwater quality from many different activities throughout the city. So we have a very good study that was done a few years ago by Kito Associates, and we're looking at how some of these recommendations can be brought forward, both through development permit areas and bylaws. So that's something that I'm undertaking some study in right now. And of course, the trail network and connecting people to special places, it's a really big part of protection, is giving appropriate access, signage, helping people understand... helping people understand and also not get too involved in. A parallel initiative to the SCP update and something we're very fortunate to be involved in is looking at how we value and invest in taking care of our natural assets in the city. And so we're one of five member communities in the Municipal Natural Assets Initiative. And really, this is a way of recognizing the natural values and incorporating that in the asset management so that we're actually ensuring that we invested in taking care of, taking care of the issues. So we're looking at wetland protection and what do the wetlands in the city actually provide the city in terms of stormwater and groundwater protection? But the region of Peel, Ontario, looking at watershed protection, source water protection. Town of Oakville, Ontario, City of Nanaimo, District of West Vancouver. So these are five really big players with a lot of capacity and we're definitely really excited to be part of the initiative. Right now, it's gathering the background data and pulling together the required information for doing the study. It's about a year-long study process. So it's a good opportunity for us to take a deep look at our stormwater system as well, which is definitely a source of a lot of concerns in the city. Things get cut off. That's okay. It's the bomb. Yeah. That's okay. So in the spring, we undertook the Strategic Community Energy Emissions Plan with the Community Energy Association of V.C. And this is, follows perfectly in line with the Sustainable Community Plan, which identifies targets for greenhouse gas emissions and measures to help us get there as a community. So the Community Energy Association studied available options to us very deeply and there's many of them in that plan, which council endorsed. There's some that fall specifically within a Sustainable Community Plan in terms of what that mandate is. And some of the things that make a big difference for us are organic diversions of the composting programs, land use densification, so promoting infill and more people living in walkable, likable core of the community, along with sustainable transportation options. And then district energy and renewable energy systems, so helping remove, you know, reduce the need for natural gas consumption, for instance, for heat and hot water. Those are some things that the community can certainly do. But as we see from the chart, the target is a steady decline through the decades there. The plan helps us get partway there. Business as usual is not very good. It allows a bit of reduction because of what's coming in the building code. How do we help actually meet climate sustainability? That's going to be an ongoing challenge for the community and we'll have to be taking close look at how to go to that plan that's been established and how to get beyond it. And our action here, we're looking forward to an upcoming meeting with Director Russell and some of the agricultural society and food security stakeholders on how we can develop some strategies appropriate for the plan. And this really speaks to everything from ensuring that, when I was in Edmonton, there is a safe way that closed down. They put a covenant on their property that prevented other grocery stores from coming into that spot. And this is utterly amazing that they were able to get away with that. And so we want to make sure we don't create food deserts where people in need in our community can't get access to food through poor planning decisions, for instance. But how can we support the community also in providing for the needs while sustaining air quality, water quality and the life processes? So making sure that the agriculture in the community also isn't impacting groundwater. We have a role to play in supporting that, but there's also other jurisdictions involved there for sure.
Can I ask a question? How do we create bylaws or policies to help stop, you know, commercial or chemical agriculture from impacting our watersheds as council? What type of power do we have to do that?
I think I'll jump into that. Because chemicals and whatnot are regulated at a federal level and provincial level, that's where again, where Director Russell and you guys sitting at the table saying, how can we move something like this to AKBLG to move it on to UBCM? But then moving it, moving it from there into a regulatory piece within your community, because it's challenging because the stores are allowed to sell the product that's federally and provincially regulated. What you can do is move towards a, you know, and I always talk about this, we talked about it a little bit earlier, a charter. And it's a community process where the community buys into that process, where it becomes a way of life. So what you do is you start to promote that. So if that was the goal of council, for instance, and say, well, how would we go about that? Well, then we would hire in, maybe hire in some students and then you would start to educate the community. It would take five years, eight years to get there because there's no quick solution to that because there's going to be one person that's going to go say, well, I'm putting Roundup out here because I'm not pulling weeds. And that's a change in culture. People will say, well, what else can I do to not pull weeds? There's still going to be used products. So I think it's something that has to be a systemic cultural change in your community. So I don't think there's really any one quick ban date to pull off.
With regards to non-organic herbicides, pesticides, there are other communities that have banned the use within their city limits.
Yeah.
And they've prohibited the use of those products. And so by passing a bylaw, you know, that's something that we can be looking at and giving the community advanced warning and giving them time, you know, so that they're prepared and that they know, and providing additional options and showing them. And I think through the learning garden possibly, as a good source of education, putting out information on alternative sources of meat prevention and pest prevention would help. Because I know that people, I know, we talked about this before when I brought it to the screen, about people using Roundup within city limits. And I know that the city itself only uses organic product. But the federal regulations stipulate that a person has to have, if they're using it, signage up for seven days prior or after using it. There has to be signage replaced to protect animals and children. But who's enforcing that to make sure that it's done? Because that's a concern.
That's why some communities have put bylaws in place. It's ultra, it's beyond their powers to be able to enforce it. The community member can still, I could still drive out and bring stuff in. You can't stop me. If you have a bylaw officer that's watching and going around and doing this, doing soil analysis and testing to determine if that was the case, and then to prove that that actually happened, is going to be a mammoth challenge. But what you're seeing now, they've just, a lot of the stores are starting to pull the concentrated product off the shelves. And that's the movement that's happening at the grassroots level to get it there because there was a profit in that for them. But now they're starting to see that cultural change. So I know, for instance, a Home Depot, you can't buy the concentrated bottle of Roundup. You can buy the diluted version of it, but none of the stores now are carrying that product. So that's that change. And I would say to you that, you know, whether it does, it's effective at the AKBLG resolution level to UBCM, I think keep talking about it. I think if it keeps coming up as a main priority, then it doesn't go away. But if you do make it a, an ongoing issue or an ongoing part of your conversation in your Sustainable Community Plan, then it will get there. It's almost like people burning garbage. They still do it in Area D, but it's, the chemicals that come from that are massive, but we're slowly getting away from that.
The conversation needs to be more importantly with the community rather than government organizations. I know the government can affect change down the road, but I think what we need to do is, is get the community on side and educate the community. Because if they buy into it, then there's going to be less protest on it and less resistance to vulnerable trees.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. That's the right way of doing it. But we, right now, we're on the, I guess if you want to call it the turtle of evolution in our, in our, in our lifestyle here is how, you know, we've got to get those changes in place. So this process here is a great way to start it. And then it, once council's adopted this plan and there's some processes in there, then we can start looking at objectives that align with that. That gives our staff the marching orders because you've adopted this process.
Who set the target?
We actually set it in our, in our signing onto the Climate Action Charter and in our previous Sustainable Community Plan. So this is basically consistent with the province's target that's been established to date and hasn't been. The question that's out there now in this scientific community is that target strong enough?
Okay. Because I asked that question because I noticed around 2019, 2020, we are pretty close to actually hitting our target. So we're actually asking for a higher target. That good? Okay.
And I was just going to touch on that is, council, you pay yourself $25 a ton for carbon emissions that you create in our community. You're putting that into a reserve. Should there want to be a, out of this plan, a climate action accord or policy or something or a community energy system? I think right now you have about $25,000, $30,000 in a reserve fund for moving on climate action. So you have some abilities there.
One last question. Does the target exceed international or provincial or federal levels?
The new federal. The new federal targets, they're, they're a new target. I don't believe this exceeds those. I think we have to sit back and look at what's going to settle down in terms of the new commitments.
All right. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to call the question all in favor.
So can you, just before Mayor calls a question, can you, are we, so the next steps, maybe with the next steps there?
Sure, absolutely. So two things, Mayor Conrad. One, in regards to the groundwater protection, actually, one of the dimensions that we are under condition of our operating permit for our drinking water, required to develop, develop source water protection for each of our water sources. So plans that actually recognize all of the threats and measures to mitigate those threats, including pesticides, including petrochemicals. So we're going to be having a really close look at all of our powers under the jurisdiction to protect those well sources. Now, the next steps for the plan, we're working on developing a workshop for looking at affordable housing and how the plan can support the community. Thank you, Networs. So the next theme here, theme two, affordable housing, sort of starting now but extending through the rest of the calendar year. Our consultant, Dave Smith, has identified some really good measures for discussion with council and stakeholders on affordable housing and how we can promote affordable housing within our community planning. And we want to provide a thorough option for council to, you know, how do we, what policies can work on in there? I think that's a really important area in the community that's been recognized. Theme three and theme four have actually been switched. The development permit area review kind of comes after considering and bringing the plan into line with the asset management, transportation and infrastructure. So that's where we've been doing tremendous work at the city in asset management and I recognize as one of the leaders in this, especially first of all, communities. And the community plan sort of needs to walk hand in hand with how that looks and also provide direction for asset management for future infrastructure. So that's a major theme of investigation that will be right in line with the work that's going on with asset management. And then following each of these themes, council workshops on what the issues are. And then we begin the process of drafting all the changes that have been agreed on and going through the reveals, referrals to get external agency support. So it's a, it's a long process and our staff time is certainly allocated in many directions. There's a lot of big developments happening that are taking a lot of time, of course, but we're trying to keep this on track and trying to have progress every month on the process here.
Excellent. Thank you.
Just had one piece. This is an important change in, in our community and our, in the culture for our community because we're starting to embrace community planning. And this process has happened in the past, but I'm going to suggest that in our organization really hasn't had representation from a city planner. And city planning is one of the things that, you know, the tradition and the historical values of your community are kept alive in that process. These processes are very current and they're considered to be the soft surfaces, but they are so important. And, and the fact that we're going down this road is just a, I think it's an important thing for council to recognize the big change you're bringing to your community because you're, this is a dynamic shift in what you do. So you think about what you bring as a counselor to your community. This is a very, very big change because you're now changing the course of direction with your community input on things that weren't necessarily on the radar to be done in the past. So it's a big, big deal because this will be left forever. So it's an important piece for council to recognize. So I think it's great and we're very fortunate to have our planning department team with Kathy and Dee Dee and Graham looking into this stuff because they are bringing a different lens, if you will, to this whole process. And, and I think you're seeing it in the stuff that you're, you're getting reported to you on a regular basis. So I'd like to say nice work, guys.
Very good.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Moving on to our next item, which is again from the Manager of Development and Engineering Services. Subject matter is the Memorandum Update on the Energy Innovation Grant. Recommendation, council receives for information, the Memorandum Update on the Energy Innovation Grant from the Manager of Development and Engineering Services. May I have a move or counsel trip?
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. So staff discussed, we looked at the, following the resolution from on September 6th, we looked at the requirements of the grant, the budget requirements and administration. It's a substantial grant, also requiring a big upfront investment in time in developing it. And one of the stipulations is that you have to have a shovel-ready project worth, worth at least basically twice $300,000 because they will match at a minimum $300,000 contribution from the city. So there are some things on the long-term radar, but they're not at a place now where they're shovel-ready. I, go ahead. So I think this is, this looks like a, I think that, sorry.
It's okay. It's not to do with this.
No, okay. Thanks. This, this fund could be available in the future and we'll be looking for how it fits in with the capital priorities. Thank you. Thank you.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Okay. Now we're looking to our monthly highlight reports from the department managers and the recommendation of staff requests for council to receive the monthly activity reports from department managers. Recommendations to receive the monthly activity reports from department managers. May I have a move on that, please? Counselor Hammett? Any discussion? Counselor Butler? And then Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, there is a few interesting things here within the reports that I just wanted to elaborate it on because they're really only titles of what's happening. For the bylaw review, it says that the remaining river camp is now being handled by the Ministry of Natural Resources. And I'm just wondering how the ministry has become involved and if they're planning on continuing to handle those type of issues for us or if it's just temporary. And then under, so for the acting corporate officer, I'm just wondering more information about what happened with the downtown business association regarding the signage for the highway and the database for the bylaws.
To our CEO, Mr. Allen.
I'll, I'll address the first, the last two and then maybe we can pass over to the bylaw officer. So the meeting with the downtown BVA and the workshop that they planned, they apparently set up the referral group or the group and they want to, they want to have it autonomous from council process. So they really want it to be for the businesses determining what the businesses want. They don't want to have council saying what council would like to have. They would like to have what the businesses feel is all they need. It'll still come back to council, but it'll just be from the business point of view. The database for the, for the bylaws, our team is working on the process through the course of this winter to refine many more of the bylaws, to bring the bylaws forward that are, that do not have amendments included in them that don't have multiple layers that we can put on the website that are actually true and consistent. So that is being worked on as we speak with our team. So you'll see more bylaws being introduced to the website for, basically for people to access. And we'll show them how to access, give them a little bit of a descriptor on how to access the bylaw if it's in a specific location. Because you'll notice on our website, you can drop down the menu and go to those areas and the bylaws come in just a matter of us continually uploading that information. And then the river camp.
Yeah. Mayor Conrad, in respect to the Ministry of Natural Resources, we have been looking at every avenue we could to deal with this one camp that's been an extreme problem for us. In doing so, we found out that everything that is below the high-water mark is considered crown land. So being crown land, even though it's within the municipality, the Ministry of Natural Resources holds the power in finding and removals and everything on that property.
So they're being helpful?
So they've been here. We've met with them. We have the RCMP, the fire chief, ourselves and the ministry with two officers. They've been issued their final notice, October 30th. They're walking in with the crew and they're all on everything. If they're not out, everything goes to the landfill. If they're not out, everything goes to the landfill. So we're gonna get rid of it at the end of the month. But that's how they became involved.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up.
Counselor Butler and Counselor Hammett and then Counselor Thompson.
Thank you for the updates. I was also wondering about the water main across the Fish Street, said it needed repairs with a diver. That's the water main we were going to be replacing, so I'm just wondering why we're fixing it if there was a break in it.
To our CEO.
Mr. Mayor, so as part of the process, while we were at UBCM, the manager of operations called me and said that a member of the public called in regarding water bubbling out of the main. So we had to go in and, we had to put a band-aid on it to stop water from, chlorinated water from entering into the river. So we sent somebody in, put a band around it and we did not do any extensive repairs to it, but we had to do that to make sure we didn't add the chlorinated water into the natural river.
Mr. Hammett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regards to unsightly premise and compliance, we had one of our community members here at our district meeting addressing an issue regarding a fine on their unsightly premise and council granted them an extension to, I believe, the end of October, or was it the end of November? End of November? I'm just wondering on the status on that, if there's an update and whether that will be compliance in the timeline that we have given them.
I believe it was the beginning of November.
It's, no, November 30th is the deadline. Yeah, but since that time, there has been a substantial number of loads of material go off the property. The fence on the east side of the property has now been mostly removed off city property and has been installed on their property at the proper height. So they're making substantial progress. While they meet the deadline, we're crossing our fingers.
Okay.
But yeah, vast improvement already.
And just a sideline from that, regarding the fence height, and it didn't click into me afterwards and I realized what she had done. I mean, she got an eight-foot fence and it was supposed to be six and she cut it from the bottom instead of the top, so. But in talking about this eight-foot fence bylaw, just out of curiosity, I see most people with home vegetable gardens around town with eight-foot fences, wire fences.
Wire fences permitted.
Oh, wire fences are permitted, but solid wood.
Solid screening can be a maximum of six feet.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Open wiring, eight feet.
Thank you.
That's all the gear done.
Yes.
A quick question I have with the resolution that was passed was to give her extension till the end of November.
That's correct.
Now there's substantial improvement being done. To what level, I guess that will be council's decision, to what level we will give a level of tolerance should she hit the seventy or eighty or ninety percent or will the city be looking at it as a total clean?
Well, what we'll do is we'll go and we'll assess it at a certain point. We will bring that information back to council and if they're satisfied with it.
Okay.
Then we'll proceed with, you know, she's good to go. Because she probably will have a certain amount of material behind the house where it's non-visible.
Yeah. Well, my question is, does the city have a certain level of tolerance?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really discretionary and you gotta, you gotta value everyone on its own merits.
Okay.
You really do.
Three pictures.
Thank you. Counselor Tripp?
Thank you. If I could just go back to the water sewer segment there and please, just to get an update on the sewer service repair on Twenty-Second Street. We were by there and we saw somebody going down about six feet into a hole there. And I just was wondering, I believe this is the street that's up for repayment, right? So I just, I was just wondering how, does this impact that or was it a completely separate thing that needed to be done?
To our CEO.
Mr. Mayor, so as part of the process in preparation for the paving next year, we had to go in and camera the main and determine where there was challenges and then we're going in and fixing those repairs. So as we moved through, we're not replacing the sewer lines, we're just doing the repairs. So we're not conflicting with the contractor doing the paving. So when that time comes, we'll establish that and we'll have done the minor repairs that are there. So you'll see some minor patchwork for those things. We're not gonna do an elaborate paving job. We're gonna get through the winter months with it and we'll be asking council to approve that as an early budget approval in the coming months before the season so we can get favorable pricing for paving.
So may I ask then, so that the infrastructure then underneath all of that will be upgraded to sufficient point that it'll be good to go?
Yeah. So, Mr. Mayor, as part of the process that we have to undertake as a community is understanding the risk tolerance that we have. So what we've done is we've gone through there and evaluated the pipe and determined that it has a certain amount of life expectancy left in it. So paving life expectancy can be thirty, thirty-five years with proper sub-based material. Based on that, we did the same thing on Sixty-Eighth Street, rather than replace that and turn it into a multi, or a million-dollar job. We didn't replace the sewer line, we did some repairs and that's exactly what we're doing here because it's gonna allow us to build up the funding for the future so we'll have money for that replacement when the inevitable replacement happens.
Mr. Butler?
So we're able to check out the sewers, is there any way that we're able to establish the continuity of the water line?
So, Mr. Mayor, the only way we can do water main evaluation is to grab some sample chunks, send them into a destruction engineering firm and what they do is they do destruction testing on them. We go in, dig it up, do a repair. The other thing we can use is empirical data that we have related to the number of breaks that we've had in the line. So if, for instance, if there was five or six breaks in the line, we could determine that based on the type of material that we're using for the water main or other contributing factors such as that. But I'm gonna suggest to you that the water mains are, that water main's off in the shoulder, so it's gonna be outside of the paved area.
Oh, it's there, yes.
So for instance, yeah, so if you had to replace that water main, you could theoretically put another water main side beside it. And then what you do is you chlorinate and test it and then what you could do is push surfaces under the road with, they use a hydraulic ram, and then you push it through and you pull it back. And what happens is you don't have to replace the pavement underneath it. So we have technologies in place and that's where the staff are evaluating those things as they move along saying, you know, do we want to deal with this water main today? No, it's off in the shoulder, we have a very large gravel area, natural swell, then we could simply replace the water main there. That's some of the favorable conditions that we have in some places, but there's gonna be other situations that will arise and you'll say, we have to, you know, we have to do it now, we don't have a choice.
And as technology improves, we're able to wait it out.
Exactly.
Might simplify the procedures and less cost later.
Yep.
Okay, unless there's any other questions, all in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Okay, moving along to...
On the staff reports, we just, UBCM, we had the grant announcement for the Premier Clark, or actually I believe it was Mr. Tusk. No, Premier Clark announced that there was going to be money for water and wastewater at seventeen percent funding. So we are now going to be, the manager of development and engineering is going to report shortly, we would like to apply for well number two under that, so we would only have a seventeen percent allocation to that project. So council will see that, we'll need a resolution from you quickly so we can submit our application in for that. So we may even ask you for that resolution tonight if, so we can make sure we get our application in time because it is one point two.
We'll get to the systems on Thursday, we'll discuss.
Yes, we're gonna talk to them on Thursday about that, but if we get the resolution tonight, then we can at least be ready to submit everything in so we're not delayed. Because it sounds like the province wants to give away several hundred million dollars.
Counselor Thompson?
Just speaking of grants, Mr. Tusk, he said on Friday, I believe it's Friday, that there were grant announcements that were, and he said, he recommended that people look at their website on the, I wanna say Park Gas, but that's probably not right. Have there been, I know, grant announcements made?
For parks.
For any?
Yes, well that's, oh, that's the World Dividend Fund, they did some announcement, they were informally announced at UBCM.
Yeah.
So the MLAs were telling their constituents, but now, I believe because the provincial election is coming, they're gonna want to make, do their spending now. So we're gonna see the spending by November 23rd, probably before the end of the year to see if we can get an infrastructure project. So I think, because there seems to be a short timeline for the announcement of that type of money, that it's coming up that quickly, so.
But we don't know if we've got any.
We don't know yet, but if we do have that, then we'll come forward with another project that is shovel-ready for infrastructure-related, because we do have a couple and that's going to be Twenty-Second Street as well.
Counselor Butler?
Sorry, I know we've already accepted the reports, but I did have one more question from a community member regarding the sewer lift station at City Park. And I have noticed it myself and I've been down there with the kids, that it does have an odor coming from it at some point and is there anything that can be done about that or what's the status of it?
To our CEO.
So, Mr. Mayor, what happens is it is a, it comes back down to, there's a combination of things that we have to do. What's, what happens in there is the odor is created by H2S levels, so what happens is the lift station, everything comes in from another lift station and then gravity feeds it in. By the time it gets oxygen, the water is sitting there, the effluent is sitting there without oxygen and then it gets oxygen and then it just breathes. So then it comes into this and it's splashing around. What we, what we're gonna do is we're going to be introducing a product just upstream of that, that will reduce the H2S levels. We can't guarantee there will be no odors because of the product that it is. What we can do though is minimize those effects, but from time to time, the sewer system gets upset as well. It's almost like if somebody puts something down the drain, that causes it to react and we get even more odors. So unfortunately, our employees have to deal with that. But again, moving into that situation is, that is our main lift station for City Park. Now, we could think about things such as, you know, maybe a plant or a honeysuckle plant or something around the spray park that gives you a little bit more of a fresh fragrance, but I can't suggest that we'll be able to ultimately solve that problem. I'm gonna tell you that we could maybe minimize it, but we do know that there's some challenges.
Is it a venting situation?
Uh, no, it's, it's, when the sewer main is closed and it, when the force main's closed, it moves the sewer along periodically and then when it comes out of there from sitting stagnant, you almost see that when they say it goes septic, that's where it has no oxygen, then it gets oxygen and just, and then the odors all come out with it.
But where it disperses is through the vent?
Yeah, it is through that vent. We're talking about a charcoal vent in there and maybe some...
And we're gonna raise it higher so it's above the level, since I suggested in my email.
In the, at the lift station here, that could be an option.
Because then it's a higher atmosphere and it could be dispersed.
Maybe the people in the apartment would...
Well, we're not gonna raise all the people.
Exactly, you're right.
It's gonna solve the problem for the people that are in that public area.
And we could look at venting it into a mass area, like you almost see where they use like a bio-mass where they put underneath like that.
Yeah, but I mean, raising it higher is a cheap, cheap trial.
Yeah, it works. Absolutely.
Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, thank you, thank you Counselor Butler for bringing that up. I had given an undertaking on one of the Facebook pages that I would bring this forward to council because the parents of small children are finding that they, they have to leave the park because of the odor, it's so horrendous. And that's unfortunate because, you know, we've got spray park, we've upgraded the playground area and, and so I'll be able to put back that was discussed and that auctions are being looked at to try and minimize the negative impact of the odors, so, so thank you.
And we do have a similar situation at Times Town about the lift station there too, again.
So again, it comes back down to how we address it. So we will address it and I think council can look forward to being that addressed. Probably won't get many complaints over the winter, but you'll get more as we move through the spring season and we'll be adjusting the volumes of the product that goes in there as well, so.
Bio-masses.
Or...
Bio-masses, no, in any event. Who we called?
You did already, yes.
All right, moving along now to the proposed bylaws for discussion from our chief financial officer. Subject matter is bylaw 2034-2017 Revenue Anticipation Borrowing Bylaw. The recommendation that council gives first three readings to bylaw 2034-2017 Revenue Anticipation Borrowing Bylaw at the October 24th-2016 regular meeting of council. May I have a move, Counselor Butler? All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Hold on.
I would just like to thank our CFO for bringing this forward early enough so that we're not scrambling at the beginning of the year to get our ducks in a row, so good work, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the manager of development and engineering services once more is the subject matter is the Johnsons Flats Wetland Protected Natural Area Dedication. And the recommendation is that committee will receive the report and recommends that council gives first and second reading of the proposed Johnsons Flats Wetland Nature Park Bylaw number 2035-2016 at the October 11th-2016 regular meeting. May I have a move, Counselor Thompson? Counselor Butler?
Yeah, I'm just curious, Mr. Mayor, why this bylaw is specific to Johnsons Flats and it's not going to be a bylaw encompassing all wetlands because I know there's other areas that we're wanting to dedicate as parkland? So why isn't it being left open for other areas? Are we gonna have to do a new bylaw every time we protect a new area?
Where manager would like to speak to that?
I should let Graham speak to this.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. When dedicating a regional park, sometimes municipalities may do several parcels at once. When you're dedicating a specific park for a specific purpose, it's often done as one bylaw. It's a relatively straightforward bylaw to do and doesn't require a public hearing. It's not like a zoning amendment. I think they'll, we'll look at options for bringing forward multiple ones where they're connected, but I think geographically if they're clustered, maybe one park for the large rocks both north of town, it might be several parcels, another park down here and then maybe a couple of others. I think it's good to be efficient in our processes.
Counselor Butler?
Just a follow-up to that, so did you just say that there's no zoning amendment? I thought this would have to be, because it's zoned right now as rural, yeah.
So, yes, so to clarify, the dedication of a park does not require rezoning an ecological protected area, a park can happen in any zone. It's a matter of council dedicating public land for that purpose. Ultimately, rezoning and sustainable community plan updates will need to happen, but they'll be done as scheduled in this 2016-17 update. So when a particular parcel is dedicated, this is the act of protection itself, but this is actually stronger than a zoning change.
Thank you. Counselor Hammett?
Yeah, I'm a little confused as well when I read that and I, and I thought it was pretty site-specific. And I'm just wondering also why we just can't make a bylaw that says Wetland Nature Park Bylaw number two or three, five? And then as we acquire and develop other properties into wetland, why we can't just adopt the same bylaw for each of those?
Would you wish to comment on that?
We could take it back, we could take it back for further study if that was requested to break together.
To our CEO, Mr. Allen.
Mr. Mayor, I think the process that they're using right now in this particular situation is, is applicable to this order of magnitude of this park. We're not talking about a small little section and I agree that the counselors are right that we could lump them together in later on, but this is such a big area, it should stand alone because you're gonna see potentially in the future, somebody might want to rescind this bylaw and then it's gonna involve all the amendments or amend that bylaw. The order of magnitude of twenty-two acres, am I right, twenty-two acres? It's a pretty big standalone topic, so I would recommend to council for the planning process, hold it as it is. When we bring forward the other ones, we'll explore those options and we'll explain them when the smaller ones are coming forward to council, what your options would look to have, how they would look.
Yeah, should the flavor be there, we could always amend it.
Yeah.
Done. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, and I also think we're in the process of reviewing and determining which other wetland areas need to be protected, so I'm certainly in favor of this as a standalone bylaw.
Counselor Butler?
I'm just wondering where we're at with the grant on this, because I know we applied for the grant for the walkway and signage and everything, but I think there's already been some work done on signage, so have we already received grant funding?
Go ahead. Granted, huh?
No, we haven't, but there was money allocated for work at the cemetery and the dog park already. We just, we're trying to maximize as much as possible.
So we can start before we get the grant?
Oh yeah, absolutely, and the grant, actually, I believe we could start April 1st of 2016 and still charge back to the grant.
So Linda didn't...
Didn't write it down.
Well, we're just, Mr. Mayor, as further to that conversation, the MLA did say that there was an opportunity that we could get some funding here, so we actually are trying to pull together the cost estimate for that viewing platform, but we also, we have the grant on there for the dog park and the, and the unmarked graves in the cemetery. So to finish that process through, we haven't heard back on that grant. So to finish that process through, we haven't heard back on that grant, but what we are doing is, as we move this piece through, we would like to present that to Linda and have yourself, hey, Linda, you said that you have all these witnesses, that you would provide funding for that viewing platform.
Counselor Trump. I'm willing to name it after her. Linda Slu. Okay, all in favor? Oh, Counselor Trump.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was by there just the other day and saw the nice big kiosk that's there, sort of in the center of that, I guess you call that the viewing area. That, that sign, while it is very large, is possibly a little bit more difficult to see from, say, the parking lot where, you know, somebody might come in or people driving by. I just was wondering, was there, was there an intention for there to be more signage down either on, either on either side of the cemetery, down the parking lot, or wherever?
To our CFO.
Mr. Mayor, in the plan there, the, once a dog park fence is established, there's going to be a walkway that comes through there, there'll be a directional sign. There was, they talked about directional signs, smaller, less invasive signage. The other thing was also the parking lot areas, identifying that as a place to find your way, wayfinding to that area, and then navigating your way through it. But we are, right now, just like the manager said, we're trying to keep the cost down so we can maximize the funding when we get the grant.
Plus, by having the sign there, it's an encouragement, because people see the sign, they want to see where it is, the curiosity will get them, and they will go to the viewing platform eventually, and I guess it would be a very encouraging sign to bring, bring people there.
And it's consistent with all the other red signs you've seen that we've been working with, the woodworkers nailed to build. They've been building those for us, and we've been using that as a common theme throughout the community, is a red kiosk.
Counselor Hammond and Counselor Butler.
I believe the way for signage that the Downtown Business Association is working with the city on, we will look at, we have some positions on Central, and then we'll be signage directing to parks and recreational areas, so I would imagine, and hopefully this is the right in time that they'll be able to include this in there as well, from Central Avenue, so people can see.
Counselor Butler.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I believe the cemetery is off limits to dogs, I believe, and we have a dog park right there, and now we have a trail going through the cemetery from the dog park. Is there going to be issues with now having dogs in the cemetery when they're not supposed to be there?
We have heard these comments, but the dog park people seem to be pretty respectful, and they, I haven't heard any complaints so far. We'd maybe talk to Wayne about that and find out, but...
So we're going to have tourists coming through and stuff, right, with their dogs probably, and then we've got signs at the entrance that say no dogs, so...
To our CFO.
Mr. Mayor, we can approve dogs on leash, a dog on leash in an area, I think is an approved area, whether it's throughout the community, with your dog on the leash, they're, they're pretty much accepted everywhere. I think the dogs off the leash are the ones that people are concerned about, even, you know, the walkways and stuff that we, we have in the community are meant to be active, active ways of getting the community out there. So again, it'll be up to council to say that dogs are welcome. It'll be up to you guys to establish that, so, so I think that's what we would want to encourage, kind of...
Here's environmentally protected areas, dogs should be on leash, of course.
Absolutely.
Whereas in Colma, they have an off-leash dog park, and the environmentally protected area is fully accessible by the dogs, and they actually go right in there. Well, they don't, they think about. Counselor Trump.
Thank you, Counselor Butler, for bringing that up, because that's, that's exactly what happened to Tom and I on the weekend, when we went, sort of walked all the way around the nature reserve there, and then cut through the cemetery via the, just behind the dog park. We got to the other end, and I turned around and closed the gate and went, uh-oh, no dogs allowed in cemetery. And of course, we always keep our dog on the leash, but possibly it will be an issue, especially if you come in from the other end, because you don't know that dogs aren't allowed in the cemetery. So if we could think about possibly changing that sign to, I think leash is absolutely appropriate and should be, but yeah, somehow if that's maybe addressed.
I think it's a situation that if it's not broken, let's not fix it, and until the situation does occur, then we can address it, but at this point in time, there doesn't seem to be any prevalent issues occurring at this point. Counselor Hammond, and then I'm going to stop this dialogue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe to access the wetlands, there really isn't any need to go through the cemetery, because I think we were talking about a parking area on Sixty-Fifth, I think that's Sixty-Fifth that, that runs onto there. To put a parking lot there, and then the trail runs right there, and so I think when we were walking back, when we did the opening with Linda, that portion along the fence by the dog park, I think was going to turn into a walking path too. So there really is no need for people to be wandering through the actual cemetery, because the trail will go on the perimeter all the way around, and if it says dogs on leash permitted on trails.
Okay. All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. We have no information items, no late items. Move on to question period from the public and the media. The gentleman in the back row.
Les Johnson, GFTD. Listening to the discussion about the potential SO, Jim Wardens, you were saying that traffic traveling in one direction will be able to turn off directly into the, but traffic going the other direction will have to go around the block? Is that what, like, give him the understanding?
Nope.
That's what was approved.
I mean?
I think that's what was approved to begin with, but then developers...
Okay, so they'll be able to almost get on and off from Central.
Yeah, there would be right-hand access and a proposed left-hand access right off the highway, if I'm not... And that's the only proposition that's been put forward at this point, and that's where the stumbling block is right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, unless there's no other questions, we now move on to the in-camera resolution. Subject is immediately following the committee of the whole meeting. Council will hold an in-camera meeting. Recommendation, the council convene an in-camera meeting as outlined in Section 980 Community Charter, charter to discuss matters in a closed meeting, which are subject to Section 91B, personal information about an identifiable individual who is being considered for municipal order or honor, or who has offered to provide a gift to the municipality on condition of anonymity. Section 91E, the acquisition, disposition, or expropriation of land for improvements if council considers that disclosure could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the municipality. Be it further resolved that persons other than members, officers, or other persons to whom council may deem necessary to conduct city business, will be excluded from the in-camera meetings. May I have a motion? Counselor Thompson? All in favor? So carry. May I have a motion to adjourn? Counselor Trump? All in favor? Meeting is adjourned.